Good evening and welcome to today's Lenzine Board Education Board meeting. First, let's stand up to the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to a roll call, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that our president has to tend to some family business and that's why she's not here. So, hope everything goes well. Roll call.
Mr. President, mission statement, can I read it?
Oh, okay. We can do mission statement if you, why don't you do it?
Thank you. Mission statement for the Lenzine School District.
Thank you. We are all together. Thank you. It provides a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to lead purposeful and fulfilling lives.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Appreciate that. Roll call.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Mr. Hurd.
Present.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mrs. Moore.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Noveske.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Mrs. Strode.
Present.
Ms. Williams. Quorum is present.
Thank you. We have quorum now. Do we have any public comment? All right. No public comment. We'll go to approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Moved to second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Thank you. Presentations.
Thank you so much.
Superintendent.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. It's terrific to see you all. I'm going to invite Jessica Benavides and Anna DePonyo to the front as they are collecting their things so that they are presenting. I just want to again remind everyone what this is. Years ago, what seems like a lifetime ago, the state of Michigan mandated that school districts present their data and it was called the 98B presentation. The 98B presentation was asked by the state that we had to do this. We have not had to do this for two years now, but in a show of transparency and a show of sharing, the district is doing this 98B presentation because we want to make sure that the community knows how our kids are doing, good or ill. We have to be transparent. We need to make sure that we are doing it. And then in a kind of a special thing, you also will notice that Dr. Kaitlin Kavanaugh has left the horseshoe and is now going to be presenting not as board member Kavanaugh, but as professor Kavanaugh, who of course has a great and storied career with statistics and in fact is supporting us with all of this. So, I will probably interject a little bit for those of you watching at home and in the audience, you know, but I really do want to thank Jessica Benavides, Anna DePonyo, and of course, Kaitlin Kavanaugh for their work on this. We care very, very deeply about our children's learning and we want to make sure that we are always sharing it with the community, you know, whatever it is, good or bad. I mean, we're proud of what's going on, but we believe you are owed this information. Even though it is now not part of the state requirement and it hasn't been for two years, we're still presenting it and we will continue to do so, although we might be changing it up a little bit because we want to actually present even more data and better data coming next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jessica Benavides.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are proud to be here this evening to present to you our end-of-year assessment review and to remind you that this review is regarding only our NWEA data. It is not our Mstep data because that information is still embargoed. That will be coming available to the district though probably in the end, by the end of August. And then at that time, we look forward to sharing that information with the larger community. So, this evening, we will be presenting data on NWEA. I have with me Anna DePonyo. She is our Director of Data and Accountability. She oversees assessments, so she's a clear player in all of this work in organizing it and making sure all of our teachers are trained as proctors and that all of it is well organized for our students across the district. So, we do look forward to presenting you with this data this evening. And of course, Dr. Kavanaugh is here, which our superintendent let you know why she is here, is our kind of statistical expert, if you will, and she has been exceptionally helpful in taking a look at this data through a statistical lens and seeing the significance of that. So she'll be sharing that information with all of you this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. DePonyo and we'll jump right in.
Thank you, Jessica.
It's a trick.
Is it a trick?
There you go.
All I needed to do was turn it up. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate the opportunity to share our end-of-year review assessment with you. I also want to say a special thank you to Dr. Kavanaugh for agreeing to present with us alongside with us tonight. Tonight, as Jessica mentioned, we're going to go over our NWEA MAP growth data for both reading and math for the 24-25 school year. I'll discuss proficiency scores as well as areas that we can improve on along the way. And then we're going to end our presentation with the strategies that we've put in place moving forward that we feel we need in place for our students. But before we dive into the presentation, I want to talk about who are the students that we serve, because these are the students that we're really going to talk about tonight. So our total student population is 10,641. We have 2,315 students with IEPs and 1,767 students that are multi-language learners or English language learners, otherwise known as MLs. Our three largest demographic groups are Hispanic at 38.14 percent, I'm sorry, African-American at 38.14 percent, I skipped a line, Hispanic at 28.18 percent, and white at 20.92 percent. We also have students that identify as two or more. That's 13.18 percent. And then we have American, Native American or Pacific and Pacific Islander that both are less than, make up less than 1 percent, and Asian are 6.22 percent. So as we move forward with the presentation this evening, we just want to recognize that every data point that we go over tonight represents these students. So moving on, as we've talked about, we're going to go over the NWEA MAP growth data for all grades K through 12 for both reading and for math. It's a normed and adaptive assessment and it's also a great predictor of the Mstep proficiency. So for the 24-25 school year, the students were assessed using this data with these assessments and they took it three times. They took it once in September. That's when we collect baseline data, where the students add instructionally. And then they took it the second time in December. Then we look at that for a couple more reasons. We're looking at monitoring their progress. Have they made any progress from September to December? And if they have, how much? And if they haven't, what supports do we need to put in place? What interventions do we need to provide to actually help them along the way? We also say that the NWEA is a great predictor for proficiency on how they will perform on the Mstep and the SAT and the Spring Standardized Assessments. So we look at that as well. And then as always, I think I alluded to it, we use it as an instructional diagnostic tool to help us better understand what skills the students have mastered along the way and what skills they still need to master. So that's what we do in the winter, in December, and then in May, they take it for the third and final time for that school year, and that's when we look at what proficiency, what level of proficiency are they at. So, for tonight's purpose, as I switch slides, we typically at this point talk to you about, for tonight's presentation, we'll present to you both proficiency scores and METGROWTH scores. And if you notice on the slide, I don't have METGROWTH up there. It's only proficient. The reason being that the original PowerPoint that I provided the board included slides with METGROWTH data. And upon review, before we were looking at it for the final review before we presented it tonight, we felt there were many, there were or may have been discrepancies in the METGROWTH data. Not proficient, we're confident with those, but the METGROWTH data we weren't sure about. And when we went to look at it in the NWEA platform, which is where we pull our data for that, we realized that the NWEA platform is down for maintenance currently and it will not be back up until maybe next week. So we weren't able to give you the most current and accurate data that we felt that would verify all the information that we would give you. Now, I'd be happy to provide that to you at a later date, but tonight, in order to make sure that we were giving you accurate data, we took those slides out of this presentation, but we kept the proficiency slides in. Also for tonight, we're going to talk to you about the comparison between the 24-25 data proficiency scores versus the 23-24 proficiency scores.
I do want to just give another reminder about the word proficiency. So when we're looking at that for NWEA, it is really important for all of you to know that we use a linking study that has been taking place, which means that they take the information from NWEA and they compare that to each state's state summative exams. So in our case, that's Mstep. And what that means for us is that proficiency is set at the 60th percentile. So, students that score in the 60th percentile or higher are considered proficient as based on our Mstep. However, it is good for all of you to know that that doesn't mean that those are the only students that are at grade level. Grade level is actually at the 40th percentile. And so, Mstep is a much higher bar than just at grade level. So when we're looking at proficiency, I don't want people to think, okay, so our score is 20 percent and that means that only those students are at grade level. That is actually not true. We have more students at grade level. These are the students that would be deemed proficient on our exams such as PSAT, SAT, and Mstep. So I just want to be clear that there's kind of two markers. So that's why this doesn't say at grade level. It says at or above. But we will have students between the 40th and 60th percentile, not on these charts, that are actually at grade level, but because of the score would probably only be in the partially proficient category for Mstep. Just wanted to be kind of clear about that, too. The other thing that you will note as Anna goes through these slides is this is different than Mstep in that we have all of the kind of internal controls for how these tests are proctored and given. When you give a state exam like the Mstep or PSAT or SAT, SAT is probably the most stringent. They tell you how far apart the tables have to be and how many people can sit there and all of those kinds of things. NWEA is a diagnostic tool that we use, but we get to set the internal controls. And so one of the things that you'll notice with this is Anna is going to talk to you a little bit about how we set those controls up in a little bit, but I just want you to be clear that as we are moving through the NWA, we are constantly making tweaks and changes to make sure that we're getting the most accurate data out of students. And so you'll see some internal controls that we've put in this year that are going to make a difference in the scores that you see this evening. So just to kind of preempt that a little bit.
Thanks.
Hi, everybody. So for those, for those, our many fans listening at home, in addition to being a school board member, I am a professor at MSU and the class that I teach every year is the doctoral class in statistics. And in fact, that was my specialization as part of my PhD. So, I love stats. It brings me a lot of joy. But I also made a promise to the voters when I ran for this office that was I would bring some of that statistical expertise to bear to make sure that our data were transparent and understandable and actionable. So that is why I am sitting on this side of the horseshoe today. So I just want to talk a little bit about what I mean by significance testing. So Jessica and Anna, their team do a great job in pulling together the data and making some of the beautiful graphs that you're going to see. However, it's really important that data go through what we call significance testing. And that's because two numbers can be technically different from each other, but not in a way that's meaningful. So I always think of, you know, now that I'm old and gray, I always think about the fact that I don't feel any different when I wake up the day of my birthday, right? Like that one age isn't that much more meaningfully different than the age that I was when I went to bed the previous night. So when we're looking at test scores, we might see that, that from year to year, averages are different, right? So maybe proficiency was at 20 percent one year and it's at 21 percent the next year. But do we know if that difference is meaningful? Do we know if that difference is significant? The reason that that matters is we don't want to be congratulating ourselves for a job well done and for saying, oh, look, test scores went up, if that difference is not meaningful. So what I'm here to do is tell us which of these differences in test scores, whether they're up or down from the previous year, is meaningful in a way that reaches the statistical threshold that we would consider significant. The way that we do that is by ruling out random chance. So I'm sure you might remember from your own school days, every class is kind of different, right? And so, maybe one class just happened to have a lot of high achievers. And so that's just due to random chance, right? That's not necessarily due to anything that the district is doing. So we want to rule out random chance in addition to making sure that test scores are meaningfully different, whether up or down from one year to the next. Importantly, and I'm not going to get too mathy, I promise, but importantly, when we do significance testing, the results are really influenced by sample size. So how big or small the school is, as well as standard deviation, which means how kind of spread out the scores are from each other. Is everyone getting the same score or are some people doing really well and some people not? And shared variance. Shared variance meaning kind of what is acting upon the numbers. And so you might see some results here that might seem surprising to you, like, oh, hey, these two numbers seem really far apart, but you're saying that they're not significantly different. Whereas these two numbers seem kind of close together, but you're saying they are significantly different. That's because our results are influenced by that sample size, the standard deviation, and the shared variance. So I just want to give that caveat. Those are kind of all the math behind it. What I've done in this presentation is a series of a couple hundred logistic regressions. And a logistic regression is a statistical test where we can test for that significant difference. So we're, we're making sure that these two numbers are meaningfully different from each other. But it also allows us to control for or hold constant the impact of other variables that might be related to the outcome so that we can get a more exact estimate. So for example, if we know something is related to our outcome, if we know something is related to test scores, we want to hold that constant or we want to kind of like pretend it's the same level for everyone before we decide how to interpret that number. And so the reason that that's important is because it's a robustness check on us, right? So if there is a third variable that's acting on our variable of interest, which is test scores, so something that we know is related to test scores, but we can control for it, what that means is we can take out the part of that kind of other variable that's impacting our outcome to just focus on the factors that are kind of within our control, right? And so in the case of a school board, that's instruction, curriculum, et cetera. So I've done a series of logistic regressions and the reason that I chose logistic regression is because we have a binary outcome. So that's the logistic regression. And regression allows us to hold constant other variables that may be acting on our variable of interest. So in case you've got any stats nerds out there like me, that's what I did. What you're going to see, and then I promise I'm almost done talking, what you're going to see on these slides, you're going to see some beautiful graphs that the team made up. And then above them, you're going to see one of four different symbols. The first one is an asterisk. That's black. And that means that this difference is a significant increase. The second is an asterisk. That's red. That means that this is a significant decrease. So in other words, if you're seeing an asterisk, that means that these two numbers are different in a way that is meaningful, even holding constant kind of these other things that we're controlling for. And then black means it's gotten better. Red means it's gotten worse. The other two symbols you might see are NS, which means not significant. So that means these two numbers are functionally the same. Even if they look like two different numbers, that difference is not meaningful and we, there's no action that we should take of suggesting that these two numbers are different. So the NS means two numbers are basically the same. And then the last thing is it's called a dagger. I don't know why that's what's used, but it just is. And that meant that for whatever reason, it couldn't be calculated. Maybe there weren't enough, there weren't enough data points. Maybe we didn't have data from a certain year, et cetera. So the kind of dagger symbol actually kind of looks like a T. Just means we couldn't calculate it for whatever reason. So asterisk means it's meaningfully different. NS means it's not meaningfully different. And then the color of the asterisk is telling us if it's going up or down. Okay, now I'm going to pass it over.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Jessica alluded to, we've tightened up our processes and procedures as a district when it comes to testing NWEA. And I'm going to go over it a little bit more with you on this slide. What changes have we made? So NWEA is our internal assessment. We set the policies and the procedures for the assessment. How do the kids take it? Where do they take it? When do they take it? But for the state standardized tests, they have very strict rules and guidelines. And what we've tried to do this year is align our district assessment practices more with the state of Michigan State Standardized Testing Administration policies and procedures. We want to make sure that we're ensuring consistency and equity and the integrity of our assessments across all schools for NWEA, just like we do for Mstep and SAT and PSAT. So two, I mean, I'm sorry, three of the things that we really focused on was students only testing once, meaning a teacher cannot give a student a test multiple times so that student can achieve a higher score. We've turned off that, that accessibility in the NWEA platform. So a student is only able to test once. Now, there are cases where you need to terminate a test and I can think of one example off the bat, which a student with an IEP was not given the accommodation during the test. If that's the case, then we are informed through the assessment office and we will make sure that that student does get a test with their accommodations. One of the second, the second change that we made is only students with IEPs or 504 plans can receive accommodations. And that means those accommodations are explicitly outlined in their IEP or their 504 plan. So if somebody feels that a student should get an accommodation, that's different than it being explicitly outlined and written in their IEP and 504.
I'd like to give an example of that. So we will have teachers that will say, well, I really think that the test is testing comprehension, for example. And so then they will say, I'm going to turn on text-to-speech for all of my students in my class. Well, if it's a reading test, which it is, because it's NWA for ELA, then that means that we are not actually indicating whether the student can read and then answer the questions. We are only seeing that they can answer the questions based on listening comprehension. And so those were some of the anomalies that we had seen as we were reviewing prior test years in preparation for this school year. And so those are some of the things, if you're wondering, well, what kinds of accommodations are we talking about? Text-to-speech would be one of those. And so therefore, we had whole classrooms where the teacher had turned on text-to-speech. That then of course, we found the anomaly kind of in our back history. And so we were able to shut those off and only make sure that the accommodations were turned on with students with IEPs. And so what we do is we align the same exact layers of accommodations that students would receive with a 504 plan or IEP. They would receive those exact accommodations through the NWA platform. So it's really apples to apples. And then we're testing the way that we should be. So in case you're wondering what kinds of accommodations might happen, that would be one of those.
Another, and the third one, is no additional assistance or no additional guidance during the test, meaning a teacher cannot read a test to, or reading passage through the entire classroom unless that is in the accommodation like Jessica just talked about, text-to-speech. Those students will not receive or they will not get the test read to them. A teacher cannot offer guidance, meaning they cannot walk a student through a math problem or they cannot prompt them with anything to get to an answer. Those things we have really talked to the staff about, we've talked to the administrators about, and that cannot be happening.
Yeah, Anna's done a great job on giving proctor guidance, specific to NWA that we've mirrored again with our state assessment tests. And so then, teachers were then given the proctor guide. They signed off on the proctor guide and there was some professional development that we've not typically offered kind of in that robust fashion like we did this year.
Of course, no technology allowed. That's a given. But what we've also done is to make sure that all these policies and procedures are being adhered to. We have sent staff members from Central out to the schools during their testing times and monitored them to see if they're adhering to the policies that we've put in place. They've also provided feedback to the administrator and the things that they've seen, things that they can keep working on that need to get better and things that are working well. So, it's worked well for us. We've received some positive feedback about it. The thing that we were concerned about was with instituting all these policies and procedures and making things a little bit more tighter and streamlined, we weren't sure how the scores, because we wanted the staff and the, and the students to become acclimated and given, and they need time to become acclimated, right? We weren't sure how the proficiency scores were going to be. And looking at the, in the future slides that we're going to present to you, I think that it actually worked out for us. So, moving forward, as I move, we're going to talk about proficiency by grade level. So this is where Dr. Kavanaugh talked about. We have these great graphs and she added symbols to it. So we're going to start with the reading proficiency for grades K through 12. While we can see some slight decrease in proficiency scores in some lower level grades like, such as grade two, we can also see, and I like to focus our attention to grades seven through 12, particularly grades eight, nine, and 10, because those are our transitional grades. We know that if students perform well in these grades, predominantly in grade nine, they're more apt to stay in school, less apt to drop out, more apt to graduate on time with their four-year cohort and be college and career ready. So this slide also shows that while we have work to do, our students are retaining across grade levels. And one last thing before I turn it to Dr. Kavanaugh, we have, and it says it, I don't know if you can see it, it's at the top, below the title, this year for 24-25 school year, we had 207 more students proficient in reading than we did in the 23-24 school year.
So just quickly, since this is our first slide with graphs, I just want to kind of remind you of what we talked about before. So the NS that you see above almost every grade level suggests that those two numbers are not different in a way that is statistically meaningful. So for example, we see in grade one, the average proficiency appears to have gone up, whereas in grade two, it appears to have gone down. However, those differences are not statistically meaningful. So that means functionally, there's been no change from last year to this year in those two grades, even though one looks like it's going up and one looks like it's going down. So all those NS means not significant, means no change from last year to this year. Where we do see those three asterisks, which again means this is a meaningful change, is grades eight, nine, and 10. Because it's a black asterisk, that means that it's an increase, which we can also see with our eyes as reflected in the bars here. And so what we're seeing here is kind of a whole lot of nothing, no change from last year, same proficiency levels as last year, except improvements in grades eight, nine, and 10.
So I think one thing I would like to point out about this graph, too, is you might be wondering why grades eight, nine, and 10. At least I know that's what I would be thinking if I was looking at this slide. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out to you. One is that this is now year four, year five, coming up on year five, of having our superintendent here and changing our instructional model. And year two of, in changing our literacy plan for the, the school district. And so I think one of the things that you're seeing is if we kind of go back to four years ago, that's when students are going to be in grades four and five. That's when they're starting to really use their reading to learn concepts and by grade level and content area. It's also a spot where you see then as they come through over the last several years that is impacting their reading in grades four, grades eight, nine, and 10. The other thing that I think we would like to say has an impact is departmentalization and the change in our K8s. So prior to, a couple of years ago, we had a sixth grade, all of sixth graders were together with the same teacher all day long. I'm sure they're wonderful like I was. I was only content specific in ELA and science, but if I was self-contained, I would have had to taught math and social studies. So now that we have moved to a K8 model with departmentalization, we have teachers with more expertise in front of our students and we do feel like that is making a change for our upper grades across the school, across the school district. Excuse me.
Okay. Moving on to the next slide, we had 124 more students proficient in math in the school year 24-25 than we did in the school year 23-24. Also, again, we see a significantly, significantly, significant change in, an increase in grades nine and 10, which I'll let Dr. Kavanaugh talk about in a minute. We did see a small increase in kindergarten and first grade. We did see a small increase in kindergarten and first grade, and for the majority, the grade levels experienced an increase in proficiency, with the exception of these two, two grade levels. So after making our assessment protocols, meaning making them tighter and more aligned with state standardized testing procedures, we didn't see our proficiency scores decrease like we were afraid that they may. For the most part, we experienced them maintaining.
Yeah, I don't have much to add here, so, kind of similar to the reading proficiency that we just looked at, we see a whole lot of nothing, right? So that means a whole lot of last year was the same as this year, except for a few grade levels. So grades five, nine, and 10, we see an increase that is statistically meaningful. So some of these other kind of differences, whether it's an increase or a decrease, that's not statistically meaningful. So we, we're mostly holding steady, both in reading and in math, with a couple of bright spots where there is a statistically significant increase in proficiency from last year to this.
So these next two slides talk about reading and math proficiency at a district level. How have we done over the past four years, since the 21-22 school year, up into the 24-25 school year? And the left side is proficient, and then the right side is, talks about met growth. Over the last few years, reading proficiency percentages have remained steady, and growth percentages have continued with small increases. As a district, we're maintaining with gains in certain grade levels, in terms of proficiency and growth for both reading and math, and you'll see that in the next slide as well, reading and math scores over the course of several years.
As a district, we've really been focused on increasing proficiency for students, and so this is an area that I would like to lift, because we do have a statistically significant difference between proficiency over the last three years. And so I do think that that is an area that we can say, at least what we are doing is working, and it is increasing for students. Like Anna pointed out, though we may have several schools that have an NS or not statistically different, for those students, I would like to think that that is significant, right? Because we have 200-plus students more significant in reading, and 100-plus students more proficient in math. So for those students, they have seen an increase in their proficiency and are well above grade level. So, just wanted to point that out as we move through.
Last thing I wanna point out about this slide, I know sometimes it can be a little confusing to see the brackets over the different bars, and so I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page there. So the bracket is showing you, like, kind of the tip of the bracket, is showing you what two numbers are being compared. And if you remember, that kind of T-shaped, it's called the dagger, means could not calculate. So you might say, "Well, why couldn't we calculate from the 2021-22 school year to the 24-25?" It's because the data weren't collected in the same way, so it's like a little bit of an apples-to-oranges comparison. That's also why it's gray, I think. And so that's, that's why that's not calculable, is 'cause it's not a fair comparison, but it's up there for context, because we do still have that information. So what you're looking at for the, kind of next bracket down then, if you follow the tip of the bracket down, that's a comparison between two years ago, the 22-23 school year, and present, 24-25 school year. And so when we're looking at proficiency and also met growth, both of those things improved from two years ago to this year. And then finally, the lowest bracket down, if you follow its tips, is comparing that navy blue bar, which is last year, to the brighter blue bar, which is this year. And so for proficiency, we see that proficiency has improved from two years ago, but also has improved from last year. And for met growth, and again, remember that the website is down right now for the met growth, and so there's some data stuff to check with there that we're not able to do. So, a little bit of a caveat, but we see there for met growth has been consistent from last year to this year overall, although again, caveat might change, we don't know. So what's cool about this, what I'm very excited about, about this as a nerd, is that next year, we'll have four comparable data points, and that means I can start to make you beautiful line graphs, so we can see trajectories over time. With three data points, three years, that's not quite enough for a trajectory analysis, but that, that'll be really helpful for us next year to see, you know, are we over time kind of stable, are we going up, et cetera? Whereas right now, we have to just compare two years at a time. When we can do a trajectory analysis, we can see what is the pattern over all of those years. So coming soon, to a, to a stats presentation near you.
So moving on to the next slide, math proficiency. It seems pretty similar, where we've seen both in proficiency and growth increase over the last few years for, from 21-22 to the 24-25 school year. We anticipate that changes that we've made in curriculum, tutoring that we've instituted in the schools, intervention strategies that we've put in place, that this will continue to increase. And so we do look forward to Dr. Kavanaugh's charts next year. Did you wanna say anything about this one?
No. Looked exactly the same as, for reading, so, nothing more to add.
Okay. So now we're moving on to proficiency by grade and by school. So it looks pretty much the same, except now we're going to talk about by school instead of by grade level. When we look at proficiency by school, there were several buildings that made gains, and I wanna point three of our buildings out, because those have made about 10%-ish gains, and that would be our two high schools, Everett and Sexton, and also our online school, Capital Area K through 12. As we look at that, we can also see that there has been a decrease in proficiency percentage in a few of the schools as well, such as Atwood, Wexford. When we review the data, it will help us target and implement additional supports for schools such as Atwood and Wexford. It also, by looking at schools that are thriving or that are showing increases, like in Everett or Sexton or Capital Area, and we dive into what they're doing at those schools, it helps us take those supports and those interventions that they're providing for their students, and use them in other schools to help with those, those students with supports and interventions. So as we look at this data, it really does tell a story for us. It tells us where the skills are being mastered and who's mastering those skills, and then it also tells us where we need to improve, and how we can help them improve with skills.
I don't have much to say here, I think we all understand now how to read this. I will say, it's not surprising that if we break this down by school rather than grade level, that we see some similar results. The results are the results, no matter kind of which way you're slicing them, although to Ms. DePonio's point, it does help us understand which schools we can, we can celebrate and which schools might need more support. So what you're looking at here, just as it was for grade level, we see a whole lot of nothing, which means no change from last year, neither good nor bad. And then a few schools, so Guyer Park, Capital Area, online, and then Everett and Sexton, we do see improvements from last year to this year in those schools, and then everywhere else, holding steady. If there's a difference, it wasn't statistically meaningful.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, I think it's really, really wonderful to be able to dig deep into it, and I know sometimes it feels weird to be like, "But there's a school, it went up by three points." Yes, but with significance testing, that is noise, as it were. The good news is that when you look at the last piece on the right-hand side, that's the district. So at least as a district, it is significant that we are moving up, but you can see a lot of these schools, high or low, is just not significant. And I know it feels weird, you say, "But a school went up," or "A school went down," but again, the NS, it's a lot of the schools, but at least for the district, when you put it all together, and again, remember the concept of, you know, sample size. If you're looking at a small school that just has a third grade, eh, you know, it's pretty hard, but if you're looking at a whole district with hundreds of thousands of kids, there's at least something there. So the last thing in red, I just want you to see, that's the district as a total, and those are both significant in, in both graphs, or whatever it is. Thanks.
The next couple of slides, we've broken down by demographic data, and then the slide after that is by gender. Dr. Kavanaugh, did you wanna speak to this?
Sure. So I mentioned before that we wanna make sure we're understanding kind of what other factors might be associated with test scores, so that we can, like, target, what, whom needs to be targeted. And so the reason that I did this additional analysis was to look at, are there statistically meaningful differences in performance by race, and then in the next slide, by gender? And so the summary of my findings here is in that little box on the side. And what we find is, this was the same as last year, what we find is that black youth were statistically significantly underperforming all other racial, ethnic categories, and white youth were significantly overperforming black Hispanic, or black Asian and Hispanic Latinx youth, whereas Asian, Hispanic, Latinx, multiracial, some of those other categories that are frankly smaller groups, they weren't statistically different from one another. But this is really important information for the district to have, to understand that black youth are still not being served in a way that helps them be as proficient as some of their white counterparts. Oh, me again. So this is the same thing, except we're looking at gender here, and so the first bar, that F is female, the second bar, the M is male, and the third bar, X, is for non-binary students. I wanna give a caveat, which is that there were, there are very few non-binary students in the district, and so there's not much to calculate there in terms of differences, because you're comparing like 10,000 to like 15, and so that's not really a fair comparison. So, and when it came to reading proficiency, there was no difference between boys and girls, and we couldn't calculate any difference between non-binary students or students who had another gender identity, just because there were relatively few of them. But the good news is that there were no gender differences in reading proficiency between boys and girls.
So this slide talks about math proficiency by grade band in school, and if we compare it to the reading proficiency that we just looked at, that slide by grade band in school, there seems to be a trend where we're seeing increases amongst the high schools, significant increases amongst the high schools, and also in one of our academies, Post Oak, and also Capital Area K through 12, that we had mentioned on the reading proficiency slide as well. We continue to assess the data, just like we do for the reading proficiency, to make informed instructional decisions on a daily basis, and how to help our students with the mastering of skills that they still need to master.
Only thing I wanna add here is, we have for the first time our red asterisk. So remember, the red asterisk means that these numbers are statistically different, so they're meaningfully different, but it's a decrease. So to this point, we'd seen a whole lot of no change from last year, and then a couple of points of improvement from last year. For Wexford, we saw a statistically significant decrease from last year to this year. So you'll notice that's why Wexford's asterisk is red, whereas comparing it to Eastern, right next to it, Eastern's asterisk is black, suggesting that that was a statistically significant increase. So don't get tripped up by the fact that it's an asterisk, the different color means that it's a statistically significant decrease, so that's a meaningful decline from last year to this year. Although, as Ms. DePonio said, we did have one, two, three, four, or five, we did have several schools that had a statistically significant increase in math proficiency from last year.
So this is kind of a perfect example of how the school district uses data to make sure that we're supporting our schools. So for example, we've already started conversations with Wexford when the data came out in June to figure out what might be happening. Do we have certified teachers in math teaching at that school? Is the Montessori math curriculum impacting students in a negative way? Is there more training that needs to happen with our students, or, excuse me, our teachers at the Montessori school? How is departmentalization impacting Wexford? Did we have over accommodations happening in prior years that now were corrected by the tighter measures that we've put in place? So there's some things that we're looking at, at Wexford specifically, so as we are analyzing the data, we are really good as a district that, and I'm very strong, feel very strongly about this, that we are not just here to admire data. There are students behind this data that this is very meaningful for, and teaching practices that we can therefore improve upon, based on the data that we're collecting. So we just wanna give kind of an explanation of how we, as a school district, would use this data. Another thing that we would do then, which I've already done again in June, is speaking with Jill at Post Oak, our principal Jill Colar. What are the things that you would attribute, attribute your math success to, and then how can we replicate those things across the district? So, just to kind of point out how we at Central Office use the data, but also in collaboration with our principals and our instructional team and directors.
So here we, we've got that same test for demographic differences, although this time for math proficiency, so last time it was for reading proficiency, and we see the exact same pattern for math proficiency when we look by race or ethnic identity as we did for reading, such that black youth were significantly underperforming all other racial, ethnic groups, and white youth were significantly overperforming black and Hispanic Latinx youth. So again, especially taken together with the very similar results for the reading proficiency, this suggests that our black youth are not being served as well as some of our other demographics in terms of their educational experience. The reason that I think this is particularly important is, you might remember from the very first slide, that a plurality of our students are black, and so it's very important that we understand how to support these students, and of course, the first step to understanding how to support them is doing these sorts of analyses, so we can say, "Where are the issues?" Oh, me again. So this is same thing, except for gender, and this time we're looking at math. So as you recall, there were no gender differences in reading proficiency, however, we did see a gender difference in math proficiency, such that girls were significantly underperforming boys. We, again, not really able to calculate any difference between non-binary students, because there are so few of them. That's called low power. If you see low power, that means like not enough people to make a reasonable comparison. But what we saw here was that there was a gender difference in math proficiency. I will say that gender differences in math proficiency are a nationwide problem, due to many, many myriad factors, most of them societal and cultural, but that's not what we're here to talk about right now. So I'll just say that in our district, we do see that trend repeated, where girls are significantly underperforming boys.
So what have we done, and what do we continue to do to support our students? I'm going to talk about a few of these, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Jessica, and she's going to talk about a few more. We're committed to strengthening our Tier One instruction to ensure that all our students receive a high-quality education. When a student shows signs of difficulty or requires additional support in the classroom, we use assessment data to determine appropriate interventions, and then put any Tier One or Tier Two supports in place for them. We're working on helping our students better understand the purpose of their assessments. We're streamlining our assessment processes and procedures to tighten it, to look more like our state standardized assessments. When students know why the tests matter, they're more likely to take them more seriously, they're more likely to be more invested, and they are more likely to have a better performance on them. It's about building both awareness and accountability, so they can show what they really know, and then we can help assess from there. The schools have also instituted test prep. They have tailored this test prep to what their schools and their grade levels' needs are. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about is, we're making it a priority to regularly, to use data to regularly guide our decision-making. That includes both standardized tests, but it also includes formative and summative assessments within the classroom on a daily basis. It helps us make real-time adjustments to better support our students, and it also helps us, helps to meet their needs. And one last thing I wanted to mention, Jessica has done a great job this year at instituting what she calls ADstat, where the administrators come on a monthly basis to the admin building, and they talk about their data. They talk about the assessment data, they talk about what's happening in their classrooms, they bring attendance data, they bring grad data, they talk about what is working, they're in a group, and then they also talk about their struggles and what supports or interventions they need to put in place. So that's communication at its best, and we find that collaboration is actually helping across support.
So there are a couple of initiatives that I just wanna highlight. One is that I think oftentimes when we think about assessment, we think solely about how our students are doing, but I think it's also a test of our curriculum. So when we look at our assessment data, for example, if there's strands of Common Core State standards that students are clearly underperforming across the district, then we need to take a closer look at our curricular tools. Do we have weaknesses within our ELA curriculum, or perhaps our math curriculum, and then how can we beef up those particular standards, or teach them in a different way that will impact student achievement? I think the other thing that people don't think about when they think about assessments is, how is this impacting our instruction? The same thing can happen. If we have a weakness in a certain area, then it may be because we're not supporting our teachers correctly in the ways that they need to be professionally developed, right? So when we have professional development for teachers, are we robustly teaching them math? One of the things that our director for mathematics, Yvonne Thomas, is doing, is she really took this last year, because we know we're adopting new math curriculum this coming school year, literally in three, four weeks from now, and one of the things she did was she took an entire year to steep our teachers in the math essential practices and the math power standards. So as they are attacking this new curriculum- So as they are attacking this new curriculum, they now have a foundational knowledge about mathematics, which is really critical. And so we do think those are things that, as we're looking through our assessments, that we are seeing the weaknesses, perhaps, of curriculums that we have adopted, and then how can we take things to implement better strategies through professional development for our teachers and/or different types of lessons for our students? So I think those are pieces that typically people don't think about when they think about student assessments, because we typically focus on the way that students are performing. But we know the most important person in front of a student is their teacher. And so we need to make sure that our teachers are adequately prepared in the instructional models for our students. The other things that I would like to point out, that we're, we piloted this year, but we're going to, we're going full force, and I'm very excited about this. It's actually happening the week after next, is we have our new teacher orientation. So for teachers that are coming into the school district, they will be welcomed, as they always are, with open arms, because we're so thrilled to have them join our Lansing School District family. But we want to make sure that they feel like they're a part of something special, that they are inducted into our new teacher project. It is brand-new, it is not something that we have had in the school district. It is very innovative in that it is reflective of the teachers' needs themselves. So, for example, we have a retired principal, Becky Stevens, who's kind of heading this up for us. And it will give teachers kind of a, I'm going to call them kind of year-one's experience, right? So you come into the district, and you're a part of a cliquial group, that you know we're all in this together, you meet people in common grade levels. There will be once-a-month social events, so they'll be able to get to know each other on a social side of things, to kind of build a network. But they'll also have once-a-month professional development, and then they'll also have what we call pop-up PDs, which will be based on, for example, if teachers are wondering, how do I institute classroom jobs in my classroom? Then we will do a pop-up PD for them, we'll make sure that we kind of meet those needs. And then we're taking month-to-month feedback on how is that working? We have had some new teacher projects in the past that I really don't feel met the needs of our new teachers. And so we did a soft pilot of that this past year, and we met with those teachers to say, if we could do it all over again, what do you wish the district would have provided for you? And they gave us some phenomenal feedback. And so we're really excited to be able to jump into that with our teachers in a couple of weeks for new teacher orientation. And then lastly, I'd like to speak about our multicultural initiative, which the board has kind of guided us to for the coming year. And I know we've presented our plan to the board, and we plan to begin that this school year. And I do think that there's a definite need for that. I know that you'll see in one of the bubbles on here that we're utilizing the results from our equity audit. That is not forgotten on us. And I think everyone needs to understand that that data provided us with some very good statistics and data of things that we have to improve on, which we know, we have things to improve on. Our data even today shows that. And so we are hoping that through creating a sense of belonging for all of our students and celebrating all of the cultures that we have district-wide, and making sure that our curriculum is culturally relevant, that we can then impact all of our student achievement in very positive ways. So I just wanted to kind of link to the board, some of the initiatives that you've heard us talk about, but how we also take our data to make sure that we're making the best decisions possible to impact our students from year to year. Thank you.
So I'm going to just finish up, and then I assume I will turn it over to the acting president, so that we could take questions. So I just want to really thank these, the work. I will do a formal thanks at the end, but, you know, all of the work that we do here is in service to children, in the sense of, how can we always do better? And so, you know, I think the overarching thing that we're seeing is, it is statistically significant, as a district, that we seem to be moving forward. However, that seems to be mainly on the backs of our high schools, and there's a handful of schools and a handful of other grades that seem to be moving. The, one thing I do want to highlight about high schools is that this data shouldn't necessarily be surprising, because one of the other big data points that we've seen is that our high school attendance is higher than it was even pre-COVID. And so the fact that our kids are coming to school more, and then being taught, and then learning, I think that that's a really good thing. The other thing, of course, is that without the seventh and eighth graders in those high schools, it seems like it's a much more conducive learning. I also want to really, really highlight what Jessica said at the end. There is a huge equity issue here when it comes to white and black students. Our black students are underperforming, and that's something that we have to address immediately. It's something we have been addressing, but it's something that we really have to do. And I want to be clear here, because there is, within conversation, this idea sometimes of multicultural, which is very, very important, and that's why the multicultural work, I think, is incredibly important. And that's why, starting in three months, or three weeks, we're really changing our curriculums and doing things. But we also have to look at individual races, and is there something the school district is not doing for specific things? And then the second, of course, is the gender concern within math. That's something that we have to address, and I'll be the first one to admit, that that is not something that we have, like, created a committee on, or studied, or moved. And I think that's something that I would highlight certainly to our team, is that that is not necessarily new information, but it is now front and center, and we have to take actions for that, so.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, Superintendent Ms. Menavides and all. Now, we, we have questions here, starting with Trustee Nevadas Martinez.
Thank you so much for the presentation, that was really great. So I have a couple of questions first. Am I correct in my assessment or my understanding that in all of the categories, except for that one math at Wexford, everything either held or increased?
Correct. That's correct. And again, I want to, I want to remind everyone, especially my board colleagues, who have been on the board for a number of years, this was just the proficiency data. So in years past, we've had proficiency and met growth. Right now, we only have the proficiency data, due to, again, that inconsistency that now can't be reconciled, because the website's down. But yes, that is correct for proficiency across grade bands and across schools, with one exception, proficiency has either maintained, so been exactly the same as last year, or in a few instances, increased.
Great. And I do want to thank Ms. Menavides for bringing this up, but I do, as the qualitative person on the board, want to say that statistically significance is important to look at the trends for the overall district and how we can do better. But I do think that those 124 students that did better in math will be significantly, their life will significantly improve, because they've done better. Same thing with the 207 students that are doing better in reading, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Williams?
Good evening. Sorry, let me apologize first about my lateness, had some things going on, but I'm here. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm a little tired, so if it comes off hard, forgive me, but, okay. So, first question is, how many standardized tests are we taking a year at middle school and then the high school?
Oh, geez. So the state standardized tests. So in the middle year, or the younger years and the middle years, they'll take two, M-Step and...
Yeah, it's different by grade level. So, for example, for third grade, they will take M-Step. That's ELA and math in the spring. And then we have fifth grade, so that's a little bit of an anomaly, where they will take M-Step, but they take four content areas. They take ELA, math, science, and social studies. And then as they go up, but they really only take one...
One at the high school.
One, yeah, one, one standardized test per grade level. But they might be on different content areas.
So is the NWEA the standardized test that they take every year, fall and spring?
So, go ahead.
The NWEA is our internal benchmark assessment. So it's different than the state standardized test. The state standardized tests are every spring, and those would be the M-Step, the PSAT, the SAT, and the ACT. The NWEA is internal, so we can dictate how often or how little we give that test and when we give it. And we choose to give it three times a year, which may, it will change this, this fall, but...
What is it changing to?
So what's going to happen? That's a great question, thank you. What will happen is, instead of a student taking it three times within a school year, it will be twice, with the exception of, there is a reading law, so we need to make sure that our grades K through three are tested in reading. So they will take the NWEA reading assessment only, not the math. But the kindergartners need to take the math as well, because we need baseline data on them. So kindergarten will take reading and math for NWEA. Grades one through three will take only reading NWEA. And then we have new students to our district, which we will need baseline data on, so they will take both reading and math. And then any students who, for whatever reason, missed the NWEA in the spring, will have to take it in the fall.
Okay, that's my first question. I understand that the NWEA is our internal testing. So how does our internal testing court, aside with the state standardized testing, being maybe the SAT, because I've heard that, because they're so focused on studying around the NWE, they don't get to learn the concepts on the actual standardized test?
The state standardized tests are always prior to the NWEA. So the window for the state standardized test opens the second week of April, and they're usually a three-week window. For PSAT, SAT, that's a three-week window, and M-Step is a little longer, it's about six weeks. And then the NWEA testing is after that.
The, go ahead.
The NWA test mirrors these standardized tests. So when we talk about that they're practicing for, for example, SAT, the NWA is the practice for SAT. So, for example, the standards that are on the SAT and the standards that are on NWA are identical. They're the Common Core State standards for those particular grade levels.
So then, if you have a child that's performing very much so well on the NWA, but doesn't do well on the state standardized test, what's the disconnect there, I guess?
So there's a couple of things that can happen. One is, the student says, I really tried hard on NWA, and I didn't try so hard on SAT. That's one thing that could happen. The second thing that could happen, which we're hoping not, is, of course, when we talked about the guidelines that we've put in place, is, did they receive any additional accommodations, or was the test not proctored in a way that would mimic an SAT test, which is what we made the changes for this year? But there really is no reason why a student would not do equally as well on NWA as on SAT. I don't know if you want to share more about that, or...
I mean, I think it's a great question, and I'm glad that Trustee Williams brought it up. In general, as a district, there really should not be a difference. The way that our district, as a whole, does in NWA should be, as a whole, how we do on M-Step. They're correlated. What we did see over the years is that NWA, at times, was a bit inflated. And what we have found, and what, you know, we talked about, is that the proctoring for M-Step is very prescribed, it's very much through kind of the state rules and the rulings and the way that we support our kids with NWA. At times, as the slide showed, there were issues of accommodations, there were issues of multiple testing being taken. And so what we're seeing, which is a good thing, is, as we are tightening up our testing procedures for NWA, our NWA scores are mirroring much closer to our M-Step scores. Now, an individual child, I will turn towards the professor of statistics, it's hard to tell, but sadly, and this is my own problems with standardized tests in general, if you have a tummy ache, you're not going to necessarily do well. And so that individual kid, who might have a high, you know, score on one and a low score on another, it's very hard to tell. But with the 10,000 kids we've got, and not all of them take the tests, but when you look at it as a district, NWA, M-Step, they're actually pretty similar.
Congratulations on the increase in proficiency. I was going to say that, but Dr. Daya beat me to it. Also, congratulations on having the accommodations in place for those students that need them. However, I'm a little concerned and disheartened, because I sat here and did the average. We have about an average of 73.82% that's not proficient in reading, and 73.71% that's not proficient in math. However, our graduation rate said we have met 85%. So are we passing these kids not proficient in letting them graduate? That is disheartening to me right now, because that's where my mind is going.
So I think we have to, we have to recognize a couple of things. The first is, when we talk about having a percentage, we're disheartened, too, because we want all of our students to be proficient, right? So I think we have to just put that out there. I will tell you, though, and I think this is really important, especially for the community to understand, because when we look at these scores, for example, for M-Step, and I'll take third grade for an example, across the state of Michigan, the state average for the M-Step score is 42% of students. So when we look at our scores, for example, at a 20% for proficiency, we are, I'm going to say halfway there, right, to our 40. Now, that's the state average. Of course, we want to be better than the state average, because who wouldn't be? But when we think about the numbers, we have to think across the state of Michigan, for example, if the state average is 40%, the majority of high schools across the state of Michigan are graduating students at an 80 and 90% percentage rate, right? So when we talk about discrepancies and look at proficiency that way, we need to think about, is it really apples to oranges? The other thing that we're talking about is credit bearing versus passing standards, right? So when we talk about achieving credits, there are multiple ways to achieve credits, and yet there's one test specifically for proficiency. So I think that there, in the state of Michigan, it is much easier to attain credits across the state of Michigan. It's not a Lansing thing. This is the way that the state of Michigan is set up, and so that we can even break down for students that, if you have a ninth grader that did not pass Algebra I, we could even add the standards up over several, over several years, to make sure that we've attained that credit for that student. So no, I wouldn't say that there's a disconnect necessarily between proficiency and graduation rates, but I think you, they are, they are two totally different systems. One is credits, and one is proficiency.
I, I agree with that, but I also struggle, and I disagree with that, because everything that we teach our children should align with the standardized testing that we're giving them to make them successful individuals. And to see that 70-some percent of our kids aren't proficient in reading, and I've seen several kids that have graduated and not been able to do a job application, what, what's, again, but moving forward from there, how are we, because we still, I don't like that we compare ourselves to other districts, because we have a very unique district. We're urbanized with 67 different languages. So the things that we do here in Lansing can't compare to Detroit or Kalamazoo when it comes to our student base. And I think a lot of times, when our kids hear this, they're getting disheartened, because, again, we operate in a different, different, I say Lansing has its own bubble, own population, it's its own world, because you can't get a child from Detroit that's going to come here and say, okay, I know what that child understands, because they're Sutnees or they're immigrant. We have those, and so a lot of those things tie into this whole correlation. And it's like, how are we taking the reference out? Because our kids do hear this, and when they say, somebody will say, well, this child is doing better than you, because they're in Detroit schools, that's disheartening. Kids hear this, because people are talking about this. How are we going to lift that? How are we now, with this stuff that we've been given tonight, going to bring the family, the community, and everybody else in to help us elevate this? Because we're not even at the state level when we should be.
I agree. We're not at the state level, right? When we look at SAT or M-Step, we're not. I would like to say, though, that when we are looking at high school scores, too, we need to recognize that we may not have kids that are proficient, but that does not mean that they're not on grade level. When we talk about graduating students, we may have students that are on grade level and graduating, but that does not mean that they're going to score proficient, perhaps, even on an NWA, because the bar that we hold our students to is 20 percentiles higher than the grade level average for the state of Michigan. So, again, I'm not saying that we've, we're not even, we're, we're working, we're working on it. We haven't arrived, we're not there. I think the more we can incorporate families and make sure that they understand the standards that their students are supposed to be achieving and doing, the better. And I do think this school year, especially, we had tutoring at every single one of our schools, and so I can't help but think that that is going to help to fill some of those gaps that you're lifting.
Trustee Strode?
Thank you so much. I, too, am a data nerd, like trustee or Dr. Kavanaugh, so I'm soaking all this in. I did go through your presentation before tonight and jotted down just a couple of notes, and tried to make sure that I wasn't, too, getting into too much of the weeds of it. So the big thing for me is, like, since this assessment data was adjusted, using some of that logistical regression to control the factors. So we have gender, and she's grabbing the mic. We have gender, we have race, ethnicity, and kind of like that rapid guessing, right? You know, like, so, we kind of, I guess, are we really getting an accurate picture of the student achievement? I, I feel like, I appreciate the clarity, I appreciate the analysis, but I want to better understand... but I want to better understand how we're using it to guide what's happening in our day-to-day classrooms. Like, for instance, we know, and I thank you so much Superintendent Ben for lifting the conversation about our black students, like, they represent 38.14% of our student population. But the logistical regression analysis shows that they're significantly underperforming and compared to the other racial ethnic groups in both reading and math. So I appreciated the data-controlled variables, like gender, but the makeup of the disparities are very meaningful to me. And I guess I wanted to kind of understand, and maybe this isn't something we talk about right now today because we don't have the answer. But that targeted cultural response intervention, what are we addressing for that gap? And how are we tapping into some of those existing strengths to kind of mimic or mirror? And I appreciate, again, Superintendent Ben bringing up, you know, kids might not perform well if they have a tummy ache or if it was just a rough day or if they had a sub all week. Like, there are certain factors that doesn't really give us the full picture. And I know that data tells our story. And so I'm so excited that next year we'll be able to see those trend lines and we can make some real dents into what we're doing and how we're doing it. Because I guarantee you, last school year, the implementation that you guys have put in place to support this testing wasn't there. And so I'm really happy that we'll have some structured things. But in the back of my mind, one, without that trend gap, right? And two, for the African-American students, I guess, what's our plans? I said a lot, so I'll let you take the...
I'm going to quickly talk about the stats because you raised a great point that I think I forgot to mention in my other part. And then I'm going to hand it over to the actual experts to talk about what we're doing. But just quickly, so as Trustee Strode is raising, in a logistic regression, you have the ability to, the math term is to portion out the variance. The kind of more colloquial term is to control for something. And so the reason we control for something is to make sure that we're not confusing the impact of something else on what we care about, which is test scores. So it's a little confusing in this presentation because the information's actually presented in the opposite order that I do it. So the first thing I do is I say, where are there differences among students? Because that tells me what to control for, because we already know that those things matter, right? So the first thing I did was say, are there racial/ethnic differences? Yes, there are. And so that's something that we present to the board, but also something I say, now I know, we need to include that in the model so we're getting an accurate sense of the proficiency. Same thing for gender. Next thing I do, are there gender differences? Yup, put that in the model. Third thing, the third one is called rapid guessing percentage. And so what I have learned from our panel of experts here is that there is a measure on the test because, you know, some kids might just go like, click, 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 like, answer A to every single one because they want to get the test over with. They're like, I don't want to do this stupid test. I'm just clicking, I'm just clicking through. That's captured within the NWA score as this variable called rapid guessing percentage. So it flags some test takers as saying, this person just kind of clicked through and took the entire test in five minutes. And so was that related to score? Yes, it was, as you can imagine. And so then we put that in the model because we don't want to be confusing what's actually an issue, a disparity in gender, race, or this kind of nonsense clicking through. We don't want that to cloud our understanding of proficiency. So that's why those variables are included in the logistic regression model because the first thing I did was check to see if those differences existed, and they did. So I just want to clarify that about the kind of math behind what we're doing. It's not that I'm saying, I know it sounds kind of weird to be like, oh, you're holding it constant. Mathematically, that's what you're doing. But it doesn't mean, oh, we're being colorblind and pretending all the kids are... It means the opposite of that. It means we acknowledge that these disparities exist. And so we have to account for that mathematically so that we're not patting ourselves on the back when these actual disparities are there.
Thank you so much for clearing. I know our colleagues are like, Suriya and Caitlin, here you go.
So first of all, I love your question. And the reason I love your question is, this is a one-day test. And teaching is not a one-day exercise, right? So our teachers are in front of our students for 180 days in the school year. And so one of the last slides that we had up there is that we do have a focus also on formative assessment. You have to. It's the day-to-day bread and butter of teaching. So when teachers attack a lesson, for example, I might know at the end of this lesson, I want all of my students to know double-digit multiplication. Well, I'm not going to wait till NWA to figure that out, right? That would just kind of be malpractice, honestly speaking, right? If I'm going to give students a task to do, then I need to find out, can they do that task? So one of the things that our teachers are steeped in and one of the things that our new teachers will definitely be getting professional development on is when you present a lesson, one, what is the thing you want students to know? And two, what is it you're asking students to do? What we do find is there is a disparity oftentimes in what we want them to know and what we're asking them to do. And those are things that we need to be tightening up. And I'll give an example. If we want students to analyze something, but then the activity that we give them is not, is more a wrote-back-and-forth yes/no type of question. They're not open-ended, they're not looking and analyzing and doing things, then we know that the verb of that standard, for example, is not actually being met, which means the rigor is lower than it needs to be. The only way we know that is if we have a good formative assessment. It could be an exit ticket, it could be a quiz, it could be a test. I'll tell you, the group of people who are experts at this are GSRP teachers. And you might say, well, wait a minute, that's preschool. It is preschool. And what preschool does a really great job on is they teach something and they walk around with their clipboard or their paper in the classroom, and they're taking anecdotal notes of which kids are able to do the things and which kids are not able to do the things. And then what they do is they pull a small group and they teach until that child gets that standard. And so I think that we have to, though the NWA is a really important test for us for a diagnostic, because again, an exit ticket or assignment is not going to tell me if a child is proficient, right? It will tell me proficient in that standard, but not in comparison to their peers, which is what this particular diagnostic tool tells us. So as a school district, we may present this information to the board, but teaching really is an art and a science. And so we have to really say that when we have teachers in front of kids, they have to, at the end of the lesson, say, all right, I taught double-digit multiplication. Can they do it? If they can, then we know we've mastered that standard. If they can't, then we need to figure out which students can't, pull those students for small groups, take a look at our own teaching practices and make sure that it's not all of our students because if it is, it might be a teaching problem, right? And then we look at pulling small group, pulling tutoring. Maybe the student needs different accommodations, a different learning style. And so therefore, we are looking at students on an individual basis. And that is where we're going to, we're going to be able to tackle the disparities between students of different races in our school district. Because we have to look at students as individual students. That's why I love when we have an IEP, it's an Individualized Education Plan. I tend to think you shouldn't have to be in the special education program to have individualized instruction, right? We should be doing that for all of our students. And I think our teachers are really getting to the point where we have these exit tickets or formative assessments. And so we can make sure at the end of a lesson, the students are getting these things. And until we can track it at that granular level, we'll never see the movements at the bigger macro level. So I'm just really glad you asked that because those are just common things that we are trying to layer in, layer in as we work with our teachers and staff across the district. We have to look almost smaller to make the gains on a bigger level.
Yes. Yeah, I appreciate that. And the second part, which is kind of, again, more of a comment than a question, but looking at the IEP recommendations and testing is a huge, huge one, especially for children who have some struggles in those behavior plans. So I just was happy to hear that that is something that is being measured and put into place for those students who need that. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Next, we have Trustee Stro... Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for a robust presentation. Dr. Daya, I didn't realize just how qualitative I was until tonight. And so, but I do appreciate that. I do have a few questions along that line. First of all, there were a couple of trigger words that I got, so just bear with me. There is something about student accountability. What is this and do students have easy access to these scores?
Well, it depends on what test you're talking about. So NWEA, as soon as they're completed, as soon as they complete the assessment, the teacher can see the scores and they can give the scores to the student. Or our state standardized tests such as PSAT or SAT, they will receive scores within about three weeks, give or take. That's beyond our control.
Yeah.
And then Mstep is embargoed at the moment. They took that in May, but they will not receive those scores until about the end of August, maybe September-ish. Again, that's beyond our control.
Sure.
So it really does depend on the assessment that you're talking about.
Yeah, and so I think I am talking about NWEA and I think I would like to go back to my initial question. What is meant by student accountability? How am I the student accountable? What do I mean by that in this presentation? If I don't have access to the scores, the teacher has to give me the scores. The teacher can see the score, but I don't know if it's the practice that they show the students the scores or is it something that they use? If I am the student and I've received the score, now what? Accountable how and to who?
That's a really good question. So in the fall, like I said, they take baseline data. So NWA gives them baseline data. And then typically what teachers will do specifically, well, they do it at the younger levels as well, but more so at the older level, secondary level. They will actually give the student their score. And what NWA does is give them a prediction of how much growth they should make in a year. Because NWA is individualized to that student, it's tailored to that student. So they will go through, give them the score, and also give them the met growth score. So then throughout the year, after that winter assessment, after the student takes that, they will give them the second score and they will see if they're on their trajectory of meeting their growth. So what they do is they typically have sheets and they give them, and then they keep monitoring throughout the year. So then they know after the winter test, how much more growth they need to make to make their projected met growth for the year.
Thank you. I just, there were a couple of things, and I was supposed to say before I started my questions. I'm putting myself in a space where I'm not an education professional. The questions I'm asking you is not because I don't know what NWEA is, but the person sitting at home, and not to put down our families, I'm not trying to say that anybody's not smart enough to understand what's going on here, but it's been highly academic this evening, even for layman, for layman people. And that brings me to my second question, which is about transparency. Do you all have ideas about how we can get this information? I know we've tried the best as we can to get the numbers to make sense to regular folk. But how can we get this out to people? Maybe like a scorecard or something in the most layman terms about how are we doing and what we're going to do to do better? No education jargon. This is where we are and this is what we're going to do. Maybe in a way that can be easily chewed. We've got this on camera tonight, but for maybe the one that doesn't watch this or maybe the person whose eyes might have gotten crossed, like me, and, you know, who will have a doctorate in education in a couple of months and I still, my eyes were a touch crossed. How do we figure out ways where we can get this to be understandable for families? Do you have any ideas right now?
I have a few.
Uh huh.
One is, I will say that we have an NWA parent report that does break this down in a way, I heard that too, in a way that is much more digestible and that really says, your student does well in X and your student's not doing so well in Y. And so I do think that the parent reports, as our principals are sending those out or using those during parent-teacher conferences, are really helpful. But as far as looking at how we are doing as a whole school or as a whole school district, I think there are some ways that we can definitely make those more digestible to say, especially when it comes to, I mean, as a parent myself, there's some things that if I knew as a parent, hey, I have a third grader, here's three things that would really be great if your child could practice at home or that you can look forward to this year that they should be able to master. I think that creating some parent guidance around what children are learning in a way that's, one, digestible, one, understandable, and two, that parents can really celebrate those growths with their students would be really critical. So I know my team is working on that as we're doing the new curriculum standards that we're looking to break those down for families to say, in fifth grade, here are some things your children should be learning. And then hopefully, we can look at those with the parent reports to say, oh, here are the areas that they're doing well or not in. I agree with you. This, I mean, NWA, there's a, we haven't even hit the tip of the iceberg, but there is a rabbit hole you can go down with every diagnostic report known to man. And so again, if we can't make it actionable, then it's really, like, it's just, it becomes very cumbersome. So I'm glad that you brought that up because I think there are some ways that we can make this more accessible to all of our families outside of the, out of this board meeting.
Thank you. And I had kind of a part B to that. Have we, the Board of Education, given you all you need for things like parent trainings to help students at home or any other of these ideas that are, you know, great vision? Do you feel that you've been empowered enough to do this for our families? If not, what would be your recommendation for us to support you, to support our students? Really, I was going to ask Superintendent Shuldenbergh that, but you're here.
I think the only thing that I would say is, yes, I feel 100% supported. I know my team does. I think that we have really wonderful meetings, from our executive team meetings to instructional division, where we are always trying to think of better ways to meet our families' and students' needs. But I do know that, sitting as a board member, you have a unique position in that the community talks to you, right? You have people in your realm of people that will come up to you and I'm sure every place that maybe you don't even want them to come up to you in as you're trying to shop at the grocery store.
No, I love it. Don't worry.
Okay, great. But I'm sure that they tell you things that they may not tell me. They may not tell their principal, they may not tell their teachers. And so I think if you have those kinds of conversations, just lifting those to us so that we can better problem solve or meet the needs of our families. I think sometimes, even as a teacher or as a principal, as I was, we think we're doing the things that are going to be helpful to families, but how it lands and the intention sometimes are two different things. And I think you as board members get to see how it lands for the community. And so I think just sharing, as you, I think, already have been doing with us, but sharing that information so that we can better serve so that their intentions land in the way that we intend them to would be really great.
I'd like to go to consistency. That's another word that hit me. What does a constant model of instruction look like? Is it scripted curriculum? Is it shared expectations? Is it shared practice? Or is it none of these?
It's all of those.
It's all of these.
Yes, so I think specifically when our superintendent came in, it was really clear that we didn't really have a consistent instructional model. So what that means for teachers is, and I'll just give an example, the workshop model. So what that would mean is, when students walk in, they have a task to do, right? They have an assignment waiting for them so that the learning starts instantaneously. So when they're eating breakfast, we're not sitting for 15 minutes, you know? But we can have something in front of us to read, to write. It can be fun, it doesn't have to be, you know, like, dense. But I think that's one thing. Having workshop model means that we model what we're expecting. We have an assignment that we're going to give. And then, like we've spoken here tonight, we have a way to check for understanding within real time. And so we spent, while we're still doing it, but the first year that our superintendent was here, we robustly talked about the workshop model. We made sure there was ample training and professional development for teachers. So that's one. One thing we're layering in, for example, for a consistent model, is how do we look at data and act on it? So we call those professional learning communities. And so we're going to spend a year of learning with our teachers this year and our administrators on how do we look at lessons and data so that we can better create action plans for our individual students to make sure we're attending to the teaching. The more we can normalize the experience for students, whether it's at Post Oak, Wexford, Lyons, the better we are and the better we can have our colleagues work with each other. As a teacher, it can be really isolating because you're in a room and you're not often spending time with a team teacher or in a room with another professional. So the more we have consistency across the district, the more there's like a standard of excellence for our kids, but another standard of excellence that professionals can speak the same language and then improve their own skills as educators. So I think that is something that we are really being very conscious of because it really is best in practice, though, that we don't have pockets of excellence and then other students or schools that are underperforming because there isn't that consistency, so.
Thank you. And great segue to talk about faculty because what I also wanted to know, do you have any data or have you seen, heard, anything to, about teachers? Are they overwhelmed by testing-related rules? If so, how does the district support morale and autonomy while, quote, "doing our job"?
I think, I can't speak to the overwhelm. I've not gotten that feedback. That doesn't mean that Anna hasn't.
We haven't, we haven't, actually, we've gotten the opposite feedback from teachers. They're welcoming it because now it's more streamlined. So how they handle the NWEA is how they handle the Mstep, which is how they handle the SAT. So it's consistent across the board. There's that word, consistency. It's consistent across the... So it's consistent across the board. There's that word, consistency. It's consistent across the board. And so the students now know what to expect when they go into the testing environment. So we've actually heard the opposite. They're actually welcoming it.
So, got it. And so there, there, is that, because, is there a survey? Did you just get a few emails from people? How do we know how faculty are feeling about proctoring the test, preparing for the test? What what happens to me if my students don't do well over time? Do we have something like that, that the board should know about? The reason why I ask that is because I wanna be able to speak to something like that, whether it's in the community, or how we're being seen in the media, or whatever, to say, you know, if it comes up, I wanna say, well, well, no, because you you had an opportunity to have your voice heard. We sent out this survey about how overall our faculty are feeling, including guest faculty, if we have those that are teaching our babies. And it's just something that I would like to see in a meaningful way, to see how we can help more, if that is the case. And great, if people are saying we welcome it, and everybody's feeling great, I I I love that. I have only one more thing, and it's more toward administrators. How are administrators being supported using this data? Or how are they being incentivized to use this data to further, to make more excellent school communities?
Yeah. Oh, okay. So we have Jessica's great about having monthly meetings called EDISTAD. Admin- administrators come to those meetings, and then they bring data, and it's all different gamuts of data. It's assessment data, it's attendance data. We know that if the students aren't attending, they're not going to pass class, right? So we need them to attend. It's grad rates. It's everything that you can think of in the school. And they bring it on a monthly basis. And each month, we kind of have a little bit of a different topic, or a little bit different of a discussion, but we talk about, and Jessica can, she can add to it if she wants. But we talk about what's working for them and what's not working for them. And it's great, because they're in a group. So if we have maybe like a Wexford, that something's not working well for them, but we have a Post Oak, and they are doing the same thing, but in a little bit different of a fashion, and it is working, they bounce ideas off of each other. And they are actually, the collaboration piece, we found, is super key. Because when they collaborate with each other, there's more power in collaboration, right? So they take those ideas back to the school, they implement them, and then the next month, they come back, and they tell us, if it's worked, great. If it's not, then let's try to go back to the drawing board and tweak again. So it's a continuous revolving door of what's working, what's not working, what supports are in place, what interventions are needed. But like I said, it's a total collaboration, but we get a, I'll just, they bring all their data. So we're consistently looking at their data and monitoring their progress.
Thank you for that. And I think more specifically, and that's my fault because of the way that I asked it. I remember you speaking about EDISTAD, and I was going, giving you the, like the kids say, clock that. Because I love the concept of that. But more specifically, what what I see, for me, perhaps on the qualitative side of all of the numbers, is a missing factor, and that is the home. What I've not heard much is, how are our families at home being empowered to partner with us so that our babies are getting a more excellent education in our school communities? We can grab the reading, we can grab the math, and, you know, you've said that pretty much every subject you can think of. Are there times in EDISTAD where we have model schools speak to us about how we are engaging families to help babies read at home? That's at the small level. I know we have big dreams about ways to bring parents in to help, if they will come. But is that working for us? Because what I'm missing is how mom, dad, auntie, whoever's helping our babies when they're not with us. And on the qualitative side, in the big triangle, we've got the school community over here, but we've got to have the village over here for the student to be successful up here. And it's the part, for me, Mr. Superintendent, that seems to be missing. And it shows in the numbers. What are we going to do? I think I wrote that on one of my sticky notes. I said, okay, I've seen all the numbers. Now, what are we going to do?
Right. I think we can definitely do better on that, being honest. That is something that we've lifted with our schools, especially this spring, is the parent involvement piece. I think oftentimes, we were hesitant to send things home, or we're like, what if this parent will help with this, and the other parent won't? Well, great, then the one parent's helping. Like, that's great. We need to, we need to be extending those opportunities, not making assumptions that they will or will not be involved, right? We need to just put it out there. So I think that's one, there's, that's an area that we can do better on. But I also love that you lifted up kind of like the model schools, because we do have several schools that are really, really good at this. And so one of the things that we've been doing is bringing them kind of as experts to our admin meeting, to, by topic, to say, please share out how you have done this thing, especially because we call it like a problem of practice. So if the majority of our principals are stuck on a certain area, they're not doing as well with parent involvement, but we have two or three principals that are doing exemplary in the area, we bring them to admin meeting, and we kind of say, hey, guys, ask all your questions. These, these are the three experts in the field, because they're the experts right in our own community, like you're saying. Lansing is a unique community. So I think that, well, that is an area that I believe that we need to improve on.
So, thank you for that. So I guess I have a question for you both now. We have big dreams about this. I can feel it. Do you have everything you need to see it done, so that, whatever the big dreams are? And then when can we expect to see movement on it? Because it looks like time is of the essence now. I'd like to see us move on this now. What can we do to empower you to do this now, radically, boldly, and in the community's face now?
I mean, I like radical and bold. You know, I, you know, I think there's a couple of things I'd wanna make sure I understand before kind of we move forward. I mean, the first is, what we have here is a presentation about data and NWEA. And so what we're seeing is, the district is moving slowly but surely in a positive direction. The question is, how can we be even better? How can we go even further and maybe even quicker? And one of the things that I think we'd like all to believe is that by incorporating our families into that solution, the better. And so the question that I'm hearing is, how can we, as a district, with the support of the board, incorporate more parents, more community, more, you know, whoever it is that the kids live with at home, or is supported, and what can we do? I think the good news is, there are some schools that already do that. And then there, and then the problem, of course, is there are some schools that do not. And so I'd wanna make sure that we, as a district, are supporting the ones that are already doing it and not getting in their way, but also wanna make sure that we are supporting the parents. I will tell you, one really big thing, and it might seem small, but is really radical in some respects, is for the first time, certainly, if I've been here, and I would defer to Sergio and Jessica in terms of how long it's been, we're going to, we hold ourselves accountable to having a PTO, an active PTO at every school. That doesn't even exist right now. And so the first step, by October, I think first or 15th, I can't remember what we wrote, is we have to have a a PTO at every school. Then we're gonna fund those PTOs, and we're gonna support those PTOs. So to to the point that was made by Trustee Hurd, which I think is really, really important, is, are we as a commi- community, or as a district, saying the community matters, and do we wanna bring in their voice? And the answer is yes. We haven't done it very well, be the first one to admit, but I think doing that. I think the second thing is, we have, over the last year, looked at some software and some resources that actually can be used with parents to read with kids. And it's multilingual, and there's ways of doing it. We have to move on that. There has to be a way to incorporate parents, or community, or family more than we already do. And then, you know, what we, I think, need to do is probably sit pretty, pretty quickly around what we're gonna hold all the schools to, and then how are we gonna support the schools that are already doing it? You know, it's July 24th, you know, if if the board, and what I'm hearing, of course, is, let's really do it, then I would certainly ask Jessica and the team to think critically about not just the PTO, but the the way to incorporate families within the learning, you know, within, you know, within this year. And I think that that also would dovetail very nicely into the multicultural work, which is about, of course, having the the families see themselves in the curriculum. Actually, let's bring in the families, and then they can actually be part of the curriculum. So. But it's a great question, and I think we should kickstart ourselves in this. We're already doing some of it, but we're not doing enough. So.
Do you have everything, I know, I was asking.
No, sure.
Do you have everything you need? Has the Board of Education empowered you, Mr. Superintendent, to move on this now?
I I would say, give me some time to think about that question, because as we idiot around what specifically we need, we need, there might be some requests. But I think that we are certainly able to do a lot of it.
Thank you. I wanna say on the record, I am not gonna forget this question. I'm gonna be back, and am going to wanna hear real answers about this. Trust, hear it from Trustee Hurd on the record. I'm gonna ask about this again, and I'm going to wanna hear, like, and if we need to do something, if I need to do something, you know, in the committees or whatever, Mr. President, let us, let me know, let us know. And I'm glad to be very loud about it, because after I'm done being disheartened, I get fired up to do something about it. And that's why I ran for office. Let us help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Hurd. Let me go back to Trustee Strode, and then I'll go back to Dr. Rodriguez. Are you good? Okay, Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I enjoy so much this educational conversation. And I can follow that for hours as an educator. I start in the night by reading the mission statement, provide a high-quality education. And that's what I am here for, for 16 years. How many times did we give to the student the test? Three times during the year?
Three times.
Is the same test, the same questions every time?
No. No.
Okay. The the how is that? The first test is about something, the second test about something else. How, how are the three tests?
Okay, I think I misunderstood your first question. So what they do is, they take the NWEA, and it's always reading and math, two different subjects. And it is pretty much the same test, but it depends on how they answer it, the questions that they receive during the test. It's grade-specific. So if they answer the first question correctly, the next question will be a little bit harder. If they answer the first question incorrectly, then the next question will be a little bit easier. And it goes, it keeps going on and on like that. But it's the same subject area. It's reading and math both ti- both, all three times.
And the questions are different every time?
Yes. Yes.
Now, few day, few weeks ago, we approved the curriculum. And I'm so glad you mentioned teaching, teachers, lesson plans. Do we teach, do we teach to the student to a test, or we teach the curriculum? What do we teach them?
No, we teach the curriculum. The curri- the test is what tells us if the curriculum is working, or if the students have learned the material, but we teach the state standards.
Then are we going to train, I don't like the word "training", we are going to do development, professional development to teachers, about the curriculum, or about the testing, or about both?
I think to do a good job, you need to 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 provide the professional development on both. For example, our our teachers in third and fourth grade, they will take an M-Step practice test, because they need to know, what is the state actually going to hold us accountable to? So they have to have knowledge of the types of questions that our students are gonna be asked. But at the end of the day, the tests are based on the state curriculum.
If we do provide professional development to the teachers, and the curriculum, and the testing, and we provide the system in the district, and how we are going to evaluate what the students are learning, do we can provide more than one professional development? We had to do it many times. Then my point is, first of all, is if we had to have a system that show me how the students are proficiency, are getting proficiency in the curriculum, they affecting the testing. That that is something that you can develop anytime. About the PTA, PTO, I think that can be part of the whole professional development. And the PTA, maybe the administration here develop a kind of common values, common objectives, common ways, and how develop, and the parents, how to do meetings, how to involve the community. The whole district is under center umbrella, and how we facilitate the the parents, the education system. I can go on and on the lesson plans and go there, because the lesson plan has to have objectives, clearly objectives, no page 20 to 25. Clearly objective. And that is another thing, the the person in charge in the, in the, in the buildings, the, I used to call the director or the department, or they should be part of this process, clearly. And we don't have to wait a long time. We can do it after five weeks of, in the classroom. Looking in the result, results, I can see schools in the low area. The, I think, they have similar characteristics, for instance, the social economics. Maybe we had to find out where are the social economic families in our district, and how are the result in those schools? What is the percentage of minorities in these schools? Compared to the other one, they are having better. And I can see here, we can group some of these schools according on some characteristics. And maybe if we develop that, what we had to do at this school, because they had these deficiencies the other school don't have. And I don't want to mention the school's name now. But later on, if you want me to, I can talk and say this, this, and this, and later you can find, because you are the one who knows more than I do, about the characteristic that you can find in the schools and group. Then not every school need the same, the same help. It's, it's, we don't have individualized teaching for every child, anyway. We should, but we don't.
Yeah, Dr. Rodriguez raises a great point. So when Ms. Ms. Strode earlier was asking about, like, oh, what are you controlling for in these logistic regressions? So one of the things is race. And Dr. Rodriguez, to your point, that's why we do it. Because we know some schools have a different racial/ethnic breakdown than other schools, and we wanna make sure that we are honoring those differences while still making accurate comparisons across schools. So race and ethnicity is already something we control for, and you're you're kind of spot on there. As far as socioeconomic status, that's not something that appears in the NWEA data. However, I do, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do believe it's possible for us to get it via, like, other data sets, and then potentially merge that data, and then that's something we could potentially also control for. But again, I, that's me speaking as a board member, more making your request than a promise. But you're, you're absolutely right on track, Dr. Rodriguez, that yes, our schools have very different populations. And so statistically, mathematically, that's why it's important to figure out, to to Trustee Strode's points, where are those differences? And then account for them mathematically, so that we can get a more accurate picture of who needs help and where. No, not at all. Yeah, absolutely.
Create a system that can answer your question, and you don't have to worry in the future. Thank you very much. And what I said, we can spend time here. Mr. Lopez, for so much time, you were talking about a special committee for student improvement. That's what we are doing tonight.
That's right.
And that is our job.
Trustee Williams. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that is it.
Trustee Williams?
I have two more questions. So you were speaking, Trustee Hurd was talking about the curriculum, or the core of how, when the superintendent first came in, we had nothing in place, so now it's been that process. And the teachers, it's working for the teachers. I'm trying to remember the word, trying to remember the word, what was it? The, 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 what was that, what was it, the word you? Now, it was, it's based on consistency. However, it's working for the teachers, but how, how do we know it's actually, the teachers are learning the models and everything, but how do we know it's working for the students? Is there some type of demographic information, statistics, or even collaboration to say that, okay, we're teaching our, teachers are getting this, and they're working, and it's working well for them? But the counterpart to that is, is it working for our students? Because again, it can work for the adults, but it doesn't necessarily work for the students. How are we meshing that to get, to ensure that it's successful? Because I think all of this plays into that. That's my first question.
Yeah, for me, and not to be like really short about this, but if it's not working for the kids, then that's the only thing that matters. Like, it it can work for the teachers, but a quote that I often say in my department- Like, it, it can work for the teachers, but a quote that I often say in my department is there is no teaching without learning. Right? So we, if we teach something and nothing is learned, then teaching actually did not occur. Right? So I think it's great that something can work for the teachers, but if we're not seeing the, the outcomes for students, this is a school district for children. And so we need to really be focused on the outcomes for students. And if it's not working for them, I mean, it's great that it's working for the adults, but what does that mean exactly? If I'm a teacher, the only thing that I'm worried about if it works for me is if it's working for my students. So I, I'm really glad that you lifted that, because I think in most school districts, um, we tend to, we can tend to be adult-centric. And that's not why we're here. We're here for the kids. And so the more that we can be student-centric, the better. So I'm really glad that you lifted that, because I think oftentimes we'll say, oh, teachers, what do you think of the curriculum? Is that important? Of course it is, because they're, they're the teaching expert. But if we're not seeing the outcomes for the students, you got to the heart of the question. That's what really should matter.
Okay, and my second and final question is, we know that we're in the summer months right now. And a lot of this plays into summer months going into. How are we collaborating with community partners who have the funding, both in school time and out of school time, in the summers, to help these students maintain, or are we being selective? I'm sorry, the way I said that, but I'm being selective, because I do know some schools have these programs. But if people are coming and they have the funding to provide this, why are we not capitalizing on that? Because that gives us more opportunities with communities, family engagement, and less money we got to spend to keep our students successful while we have those partners in play.
So I think we're open to any community partners that want to, to help us during the summertime or during the school year. Um, I do know that we've partnered with many community partners even this summer that are doing things around literacy, um, after tutoring, working with families around reading, mathematics, and so forth. Um, I think sometimes, the one thing I will say that's a caveat, and we love all of our community partners, but sometimes people come to the table and have a lot to offer. But then kind of the in-kind, meaning the work that has to be done, or the personnel that they're counting on from the school district, we're not able to, to do. And I don't mean funding-wise. It's just a, it's just a competing, right? Like, if we have after-school activities that the principals are doing, or the schools are doing, we only have so many personnel at schools. So I would say we have to take these, each of those kind of by a case-by-case basis. But I don't think that we're, we're turning anyone away for any reason, especially if they have funding. But it does have to match our values. So I think we have to, at the end of the day, know, we as a school district have a laser-light focus on student achievement and students being successful. If the community partner's all in and it matches what we're doing, great. If it's going to make our kids go kind of farther left or farther right, I do think that we have to have those conversations. And we've had, been having those with our community partners. And most of them are more than willing to say, oh, what curriculum are you using? We're happy to use that. Or what books are you, would you rather have us read with kids? So to answer your question, I don't know that we're being selective. Um, typically, if a request comes into our superintendent, he turns it over to our instructional division, and we reach out to them to, um, see if we can incorporate those in, into the programming that we have.
Thank you. Trustee Nowinski?
Yes, um, one question very off the top. The total population, can you tell how that relates to our student count data? And what that actually means for the group we're assessing here?
Great question. That's a great question, actually. So our total population is how many students that we have currently enrolled. That's what makes up the 10,00641. Our count data is who actually we can count. So that means the students that came on count day, the first Wednesday of October, or the second Wednesday of February. Or the students that came within the window that we can still count them within that count window of count day. That, that's our count number. Um, so it varies a little bit differently, because like, the population number I gave you tonight is everyone that we have in our system, our student information system. And then count is how many students actually appeared on count day, or within that window of count.
We also have certain populations that we don't receive per pupil for. And so those are students that we serve, that would be in our, our total enrollment number, but not necessarily in our count number as well.
Thank you. It, a couple of times you mentioned the difference between the proficiency benchmark and a grade level benchmark. Would it be possible to have this same kind of data on the grade level assessment? If it's just a different number, it's all the same? Maybe that gives us some better clarity, at least an opportunity to look at that or include that as well. Another question I had was, are there other districts that we do look at as peer districts for certain characteristics? Every district obviously is unique, but are there certain places we tend to compare ourselves to when we look at this in aggregate? And what are those schools that we tend to try to measure against?
I was just going to say, the one, the one report that I will, that I can kind of look at, um, is this, the Harvard and Stanford study that just came out, where we looked at, and we've shown that to the board, where we show, we're really excited about the, having the most growth, right, um, in the area of reading. So that is one that we can compare ourselves with the socioeconomic, and then also kind of population size and those kinds of things. So I would say that's one area that we do that. But I know superintendent with middle cities and those kinds of things, you're more acute with.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's two things. One is, we absolutely use the M-step scores and all of the Michigan data systems. And we'll always look at Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, you know, all of the kind of middle-city districts. We'll of course look at Detroit as well. And that system is public, and so we just run those numbers and say, oh, what was our M-step scores? And what was theirs? With NWA, it's a little bit more difficult, because we don't necessarily have access to all of the others' folks. Um, but the other thing which, you know, and I appreciate the board for this, is we are members of Middle Cities, which is a great professional organization that not only gives us our property insurance, uh, but also allows, you know, once a month meetings with the superintendents of Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, Grand Rapids. And so we do share this information. But the hard and fast, like actual numbers, those will get from MI School's database that's public. And we will absolutely look at that. And then the Harvard-Stanford study, that's public, and so we can pull that as well, so.
My last question is to kind of continue the conversation about when we see strategies that are successful, or whether within the district or somewhere else. How do we go about implementing those? Is there a pilot process in a certain school or place? I guess my concern is, I would be excited to try radical things, but I've also seen in the district over the last 15 years that we've tried things that maybe are radical, put seventh and eighth graders in a high school building. And we're now hearing that didn't work, and it actually did worse. So how do we not make a radical change that's going to negatively impact us before we maybe have some sense that it's going in the right direction? How, how do we do that safely without saying, let's flip this switch on everything and find out we didn't want to do that?
Yeah, so we absolutely do pilots across the district. Um, I'll give an example. Number Corners was a program through the ISD, which brings, if you remember calendar time for when you have little kids, um, there's Number Corners, and it brings math strategies to, to students, that they're able to do kind of carpet time with their teachers in the morning. And so what we did is, uh, they were offering us free professional development for our teachers. And so we piloted those in 12 classrooms across the district. And then we compared their data with the data of students in classrooms that didn't have Number Corners. And so in that case, we had, they needed 12 kind of for this pilot to make sure that, you know, we met their kind of regulations. But there are instances like that across the district of things that we will pilot. And then at the end of the year, we kind of look at the return on investment or the data that we're getting to know, are we moving in the right direction? Without exactly what you're saying, like, let's full bore, you know, spend all of this time, money, professional development in something, um, when it may or may not be successful. A prime example really of that is our math curriculum, right? So we have illustrative math that we're doing in a couple of our schools next year, and we have reveal math. And based on their school improvement teams, they've chosen which math curriculum to look at. This is the first time we've ever done something like this in the district, um, outside of the year of pilot that we had. And we're going to very closely look at that data to make sure that we've made the best choice in math curriculum for the next seven years of time. And so, yes, to your point, we do, do smaller pilots like that. We even have individual teachers that will do pilots of various programs. Um, our special education department did one recently where it was based on IEPs, and they took, um, it was a AI program that they were using. And then we tested to see, does that actually work or not? And do we, is it something we want to invest and buy in? Is it worth spreading to other classrooms and so forth? So yes, we do do that in the district.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much again for the presentation. Uh, and also I want to thank the board of trustees, because they brought up a lot of points, very valid points that, that we need to continue to discuss. In terms of professional development, I constantly see invitations to professional development, you know, for, for teachers, different things. So I think there's a lot of professional development going on, on a weekly basis for teachers, which is great. Now, the question is, are they using it, and are they benefiting from it? So I guess that's, that's your problem. When we give this test, we, you have proctors. Does the teacher proctor the test?
Yes.
Could we bring some people from the outside to do that?
Yes.
So that...
So one of the things that we are looking at for next fall is, for, in the fall, we kind of want to do a small pilot, to be honest. Because we have the kindergarten through third grade. In fact, we were just talking about this today, about how we're going to be rolling this out for the fall. And what we want to do is come up with, um, proctors that will come in to do those, whether it is the AP, the reading specialist, a person from our team, to be able to proctor those. And then that way, again, we can offer more consistency, and make sure that the same parameters are being given to all of our students to hopefully get the most accurate data that we can.
Super. Um, the other thing that was lifted by trustee Hurd is in terms of parents, how to bring them in. I think that to empower parents, you know, goes along with that, is we need to know who the parents are. We need to know the, the family in order to be able to help them. We have all kinds of situations in the Leslie School District. We have single parents to parent families. We have kids living with grandpas, and uncles and aunts. So we don't know that necessarily. So that's why sometimes students may not be paying attention. Obviously, I'm just, you know, is, so there's so many things that are impacting students nowadays that, that we need to try to find out who their parents are, what their family group is, in order to, you know, make them feel welcome in the school building. And, you know, you come in, you're going to learn, you're going to kind of have respite from whatever else is going on. And also to get our other community members, organizations, to kind of help us with that. Because we can, you know, farm some of the family's needs to appropriate organizations, you know? Housing, food, basic needs. So, so the kids can be prepared to learn. And finally, I think as we get together at a retreat, we're going to talk about the Student Achievement Committee, which should be all about this. All right? And so, uh, great conversation. Thank you very much. Thank you, superintendent, for, for that presentation. Ms. Benavides?
We appreciate your time.
And, and the guest presenter. Okay, we're going to move on to...
Mr. President, is it, is it in order to, um, make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Are you making that motion?
I would like to move that the board have a five-minute recess.
No objections? We're adjourned for five minutes.
It's so cold. No, I'm okay. Really? Is it crazy? Oh, thank you.
Look at your message. Although, there is one little tiny quantitative part of me, and that is my GIS side. And when Nino was talking about, um, you know, the SES, my mind, a map came up where I'm mapping the schools, the grade, the, the proficiency. But also, because, so, postdoc isn't gross, but great.
Right.
Resources. And, but Kavanaugh does really well, and it's in more, too, on the outside. So like, also mapping, what is within this, like, what churches, what community centers, what like, within like the radi- a certain radius, and like, how does that?
Yeah, basically understanding, like, what are the hotspots for overperformance of expectation?
Right.
Yeah.
And what can we learn from those schools?
Yeah.
But I'm not going to do it. So maybe I'll get a master's student to do it for. But I mean, that is a city project. It's not just a school, right? It's like, it's a, it's an opportunity map.
I mean, we could apply for funding and do it as a grant. And do it as a deeper.
You want to?
Yeah.
And then use the data for...
Yeah, of course, with the city.
Yeah.
We could. We could see who wants to fund that.
I mean...
Even if it's like internal, like if DRN wants to fund it.
We have an institute for, if they do opportunity mapping, it's where it came out of.
Okay.
Or something like that. Also, maybe, and they do grants.
Oh. I'd be down for sure. Oh, cool. Yeah. Cool. I think that's fun. That's fun. I love this stuff.
Yeah, me too.
I'm such a dork. Yes.
Okay, you have Wi-Fi?
Um, they, mm, I don't know if there's Wi-Fi. There is electricity. We are in kind of like a, how to describe it? Um, it's like a big, the cabin is like a big room with then like kind of partitions in between. So we can't like see each other sleep. There's a boys' dorm and a girls' dorm. Um, and then it's like these little twin beds. Um, and I would definitely bring a fan, because it was balls. Um, but there is electricity. I'm pretty sure there's Wi-Fi. Um, but we are...
But we have still no...
Yes. At, at the very least, we have like cell signal. I know that for sure, for sure.
I was only going to come in my...
I don't know. We did this once before, and I was not prepared. I just, like, previous times, I hadn't spent the night, or we'd like been in a hotel or whatever. Um, and so like two, three years ago, was the first time we did an Eversol. I was like, what? Because I was likewise not prepared. It's not that bad. It's one night. Um, it's fun. Can't blame her. Um, now this is not for you.
Am I going to be able to fly mosquitoes?
No.
What is that? Are you coming to Eversol for a retreat? Do I get, is there Wi-Fi?
Syria is not a camper, is what we've learned.
Not if you stay in something. I mean, there's, there's Wi-Fi.
And there's no central air unit?
There is in the cab, in the, in those individual cabins.
But not where we stay.
Are we going to have individual cabins?
I mean, there are lots of options for the board to decide what they're doing, their space. I'm certainly not going to tell you where you can sleep. Uh, I, there are, um, the buildings that we're here, like, do our work in, or like classrooms, I mean, there's normal buildings. No, I mean, they're more like...
I'm trying to find new pictures. I'm like having a hard time finding faces.
Camping, like, it's not going to be an tent. These are like buildings and houses. It's not, it's definitely not, like, it, it's not rough. They, they were not in a tent. They're not in a, like, no, I don't remember having...
But there's no air, air conditioning, and there's bugs.
There's bugs outside. I mean, we're not, we're not meeting outside. It's only if you want to like take a walk to the lake, right?
Yeah, there's lakes, there's paddle boarding, there's, if you want to do archery, there's hammocks.
It's 15 minutes from Grand Island. It's not like...
Listen, take that up with Robin, because...
What is happening here?
Take it up with Robin. Robin is a big believer in Eversol.
Eversol. But when I, we get to like sleeping, it's open.
Take a look, take a look and see. Look and see.
If you're like me, Robin, I have some...
I am a city girl. I am a city girl.
It really, I mean, I will say, it is as far from real camping as you could possibly imagine. You're talking about a more of a building. It's not like there's, it's not...
We were comfortable last year, weren't we?
That's what I said. It was, it's not that bad.
We were comfortable.
We had, we brought fans. They brought the central air.
And I mean, it's not like we were...
But I think Caitlin and I got up and went for a walk. She went one way, I went the other way. Then we're going to look forward to it. other way. Then we're going to look forward to the table. I sat by the lake, we sat by the park.
Yeah, we, like, you don't want bugs, you know.
You don't have to be outside of the room. And it's absolutely...
I'm asking for a cottage this year, please, and thank you.
Yeah, I need a round of this, babe.
Well, we all have our own...
That is rocking up at us, rocking.
Well, see, no, we all, okay, so we can talk to each other over the world, but we had our own company, didn't we?
I need a hotel, Vice President.
No, suck it up.
I can't run from it. It's not going to work for me, my lifestyle.
Bring your pillow and your blanket, and your blankets.
Okay, make a correction. We were not adjourned for five minutes. We were in recess for five minutes. So now we're back from recess, and we'll continue with the agenda. So we have committee reports. Facilities Committee, and that is me. Okay. And trustee Williams will help me out.
Asher will?
Nope, you skipped the secretary, though.
I'm sorry?
You skipped the secretary.
Secretary report.
Did I skip somebody's report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, secretary. I apologize. I could have come back to it, but go ahead. Madam Secretary?
Yes, so we have some exciting things coming up. August 5th at 4:00 PM, we have the grand opening of Mount Hope. It is beautiful, and there's going to be, I think, a press conference, and then also some tours for folks that want to see what it looks like and what our students are going to be enjoying this fall. August 18th is the first day for our teachers. August 20th is the first day of school. And as for our next board meetings, on August 1st and 2nd, we have our board retreat at the Ebersol Center. August 7th, we have a regular board meeting. And August 21st, we have a regular board meeting and information study session. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. See, I'm just going to call her treasurer. So now we're going to committee reports, and the first one is Facilities Committee. And like I said, trustee Williams will help me with this one as well.
I sure will. I sure will. We met on Monday at 2:30 with all of our architects, engineers, everybody, trustee Lopez and I, and we are, there's going to be a couple of bid recommendations that's coming out, installation of air conditionings in some units, the Luton demolition and the things that's required there, and then the Luton fence that needs to go around while they're doing the demolition as well. We talked about the EV boards, buses, and getting ready to purchase another seven. So you'll see some contracts and stuff coming about that later, that I'm sure Ms. Christina is going to talk about more in detail so that we don't have to. But overall, everything is moving ahead of everything. Willow is advancing. While we're not going to be opening until next year, therefore, seeing that we may be done with everything mid-February to early spring, unless there's some changes that's going to happen. But I think everybody's getting really, really excited about the grand opening. I've been asking, fingers crossed, that we're going to be able to do it, that we can at least introduce one of the EV buses at that point, so people can see it, which they'll work. My hope, my hope, my hope. That's all. I did ask for that. But just we want to make it about our families, our communities in that area, the students and everything. So I'm excited about what's to come. I'm excited about, everybody's going to be able to breathe fresh air with central air units throughout the schools, some little small, we're getting new playground equipments at some of the sites. Playground equipment, you guys, I did go check it out. It is so cool. I love it. My grandbaby loves it. So I'm excited about what's to come. So that's our Facilities Committee report.
Oh, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Dr. Ruiz?
Mr. President, I was absent a few meetings, and I don't know, can somebody can tell me when we approve the prints for the new Luton? We approved the prints and all that for the new Luton? When that is going to happen?
We haven't. We've, we're going to, we're getting ready to go out to bid for the main construction. At this point, we've only gone out to bid for the demolition and abatement part. So the designs, we're tweaking the final designs, and those are about done. And then we'll go out to bid for those designs. So those approvals have not come out yet.
And those drawings will be brought to the board before we move on with them. The Luton?
To the Board Facilities Committee.
And it will come back here, too.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, just aside...
Well, that is actually my question is, without the board approval, how they can build a building?
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is that it comes to Facilities Committee, then from there, it comes to the board. Now, we could also ask the, our Building Committee to make a presentation to the board on the perspective...
Mr. President, who approves?
No, no, the other thing, if I, if I haven't just finished, the Luton folks are approving this before as well, right? So there's a group of Luton parents, everybody, actually, is invited to help the architects design the school. And based on their recommendation, then that's what's going to move on. But that's, I just want to make that point. Go ahead.
That is my question. Who approved the building of the new school in the Lansing School District?
That hasn't been done yet.
No, I know that.
Right. We, as a board, will do that once everything's...
That is my question.
The board.
Can I?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I don't believe that's how that process actually works. Christina, can you give us an update on what occurs in that process? Sure. So the designing aspect is worked on with the Facilities Committee. The Facilities Committee consists of members, different members of the district, construction firms, architectures, engineers. And then we involve both the community of the new school that we're building. So that includes teachers, parents. We involve our instructional staff to come in, take a look at the spaces. So there's several different partners that we bring in. We go through several rounds of design tweaks, then we all settle in on a design. Then we get a budget estimate. We make sure that the budget is within, the budget estimate is within the budget that we need. If it is not, which the first round of Luton was not, then we look at different tweaks and things that we can cut back from the building, different design aspects that we can maybe make, you know, a hallway a little bit smaller, which takes a little bit away from the footprint, but the students aren't going to feel it, and it costs a little bit less money. So we do several different tweaks. Then that design, that final design is settled upon among those team of people. Once that design is settled upon, then we simply go out to bid for that work. So there isn't an actual board approval for the design. There is a board approval for all of the different work to complete the design.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. If we don't approve, we have to approve the budget anyway. Then I want to look at the policies and find out how we do it. I don't want to be responsible for something as a board member that I didn't approve, or I didn't have the chance to vote.
Well, okay. But then again, you know, the Facilities Committee meeting notice is sent, I want to send it to all the board members, so you'd be aware of when things are coming up. And then you can voice your opinion either way. But yeah, we're still in the infant stages of all of that at Luton. And right here, we have a, an approval request for the installation of air conditioning units, and Luton demolition, and Luton fencing, temporary fencing. So those are the bids that we're asking for approval.
And you'll see in one of our bids, we are taking on a new contractor, so we are excited about that. Also, in the Facilities Committee, it was mentioned that if you know of contractors who may be able to be on site, that's here in town, that can possibly work with the, work with the district, to maybe even do some little jobs, please, see Christina provide that information. We still, according to our policies, we are still trying to make sure that they're Michigan bred, city bred. We're even, we're really looking at women and minority companies. So even if they're small, please, if you have that information provided to our CFO, and we can vet them and see if they will work for the district.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I want to be clear to, to just go back and be clear about the bidding process. We want to be fair and equitable. So if there's any person that you know, they all have the opportunity, it does not have to just be a certain minority of company, just to say that for the record, so that we don't have any issues of concern with liability later of fair process. Thank you.
Let me, sorry, let me provide clarification on that. In our policy, it does, we did write it where we want to look at locally, but we want to capitalize on everybody. I mean, we have big contractors, but we know we have small, small groups that can probably do some flooring and changing of locks. So we want to just look at everybody and be able to say that we're well-rounded and diverse, like we are, as our students are in our competitive bidding and everything like that. So let me provide clarification for that.
To the extent possible, we want to give everybody an opportunity to bid, you know, and sometimes they can, sometimes they can't, but the opportunity should be open to all bidders that provide any number of, of work at the job site. So that's, right now, like I said, we're asking for, or we're bringing forth the bid recommendation, again, for installation of air conditioning units. That's in Kavanaugh and, what's the others?
Kavanaugh.
Kavanaugh and?
Cumberland, Kavanaugh, Guyer Park, Post Oak, and Sheridan Road.
So as a note, most of our schools will have air conditioner, air conditioning coming up?
By the end of the summer, all with the exception of a couple.
Good, good. And again, the bid request for Luton demolition and the Luton temporary fencing are here. So are there any other questions on those items, A, B, C? Can I have a motion to approve those?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Board Education approves item A through C as presented.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Strope seconded, okay. Any other questions? Here, now, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay. Now, we move on to our next report is Finance Committee, Dr. Kate Kavanaugh.
Hi, everybody. Excuse me. I know that this is a time of a lot of financial uncertainty for a lot of folks, and especially for school districts. So I'm going to briefly give the May Treasurer's Report, and then I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for a longer discussion about the potential for budgetary impact on our schools. However, I do want to raise that we have a meeting of the Finance Committee this coming Monday, which is the 28th, I think, 28th, at 12:30 PM here in this room. And so, of course, folks are welcome to attend that meeting. However, the detailed Treasurer's Report for the period of May 1st, 2025, through May 31st, 2025, is attached to this evening's agenda, and the following are the highlights of the report. The beginning cash and investment balance was $76,413,274. Receipts totaled $17,224,938, while disbursements equaled $30,197,066. Net inter-fund transfers totaled $1,310,188 in interest from fund investments to the student and bond funds, as well as journal entries to remove the due-to, due-froms in all funds. The monthly transfer to the general fund for bond expenses was $1,349,227. The ending general fund cash and investment balance on May 31st, 2025, was $66,105,62. The general funds, the general funds cash and investment balance is $2,879,41 greater as compared to the same time last year. We also received a number of donations during the month of May totaling $10,188, which we're very excited about. A few that I want to highlight are some major donations to the Bi-Pot Care Closet, which Dr. Sue Wheeler presents to us about in her Health and Wellness Updates. And so we're very glad to see, and we want to thank in particular the Greater Lansing Optimist Club, as well as the LPS Educational Advancement Foundation for their donations to the, to the Bi-Pot Closet. We also want to thank the Greater Lansing Foundation, the Blackbout and Accenture, My School Bucks Heartland, Feldman Chevrolet of Lansing, My School Bucks Heartland, Blackbout and General Motors, as well as Avid Exchange and the Gene Haas Foundation, who all also made donations. I just also want to raise the Gene Haas Foundation, they made a sizable donation to the Eastern Robotics Team, whom we got to hear from. We've heard from them a few times over the years, but most recently, when we were doing our special meeting about extracurriculars. So we're very glad to hear some of these important ancillary programs in the district are being supported by some of our donors. We always really appreciate that. Before, so I'm going to conclude the actual Treasurer's Report, but before we conclude our conversation about the Finance Committee, as I said, I do want to turn it over to the superintendent, who will speak a little bit more about how the district specifically is thinking about some of the financial challenges that we're facing due to changes in the federal and state budgets.
Thank you so much, trustee Kavanaugh. You know, I will have my time to speak, kind of, in the superintendent's comments, but I do want to take this time within the Treasurer's Report to just talk a little bit, and hopefully to assuage any kind of fears around what's going on with the two most important budgets. So again, if this sounds pedantic, or if everybody's bored because it's already 8:26, I apologize. But the good news is, for those of you at home, you can just watch it another time. So here's the deal. There's the federal government, and the federal government, as you are probably well aware, is cutting back on their budget in general, and education specifically. That conversation that you've been hearing in the press and votes that are being taken, that's about next year's budget. But something very interesting happened on July 1st, is money that was already allocated by the federal government, which was supposed to be sent to us on July 1st, did not get sent to us. It was not sent to all of the school districts around the country, to the tune of about $6 billion. Now, the impact for the Lansing School District is that we were expecting that money to come. However, as you might know, over the course of time between July 1st and now, that $6 billion bucket that was not released, it is starting to be released. One section, which was for the 21st Century Grants, which was really for after-school programming, has been released, and some other pieces have not. Specifically, where it impacts the school district is what's called Title II and Title III. This is money for professional development, and it's also money for language acquisition and students that need extra support. This money, we were expecting July 1st. It is not here. The good news, as you have seen from our budget, is that we have a very robust fund balance. The reason why we keep a fund balance is for times like these. We will make sure that the services and the people that are funded by these Title II, Title III, as well as Title IV and some other things, we're going to support them as best as we can moving forward. But I do want to make sure that people know that this is money that was supposed to be allocated on July 1st, and it has not been. But some of it has been over the course of the last couple of weeks. We are waiting to see what happens from the federal government. But again, the really good news about having a robust fund balance is I don't want people at home to think, oh, my God, the Lansing School District and like every other school district is getting hurt, and so lots of things have to happen. At this point, we are okay. Now, I can't promise that something else won't change, but I want folks at home, and certainly the board, to know that that money, that July 1st money, the district is able to cover for now. And then we're going to wait, and I will always give you an update at our, at every board meeting if you want, once a month. It really is up to you. But as of now, we're okay. I will say, that's not the case for other school districts around the country. And what I want to make sure is that if you are reading articles of districts that are firing people, or letting people go, or cutting back on things, please just don't think that that's us at this moment. We're okay. There's a second budget, and this is a much, much larger budget, and that's the state budget. For those of you, again, that are part of this world, the state had made a rule to itself, and that rule was, they were going to have a school budget by July 1st. Well, it's July 24th, and that budget doesn't come. But again, I don't want people to freak out. Just because that budget hasn't been approved, that won't impact us yet. Why? Because that budget doesn't really go into effect. The money doesn't start flowing from that budget really until October 1st. And it's really about payroll for October 15th. So though it is unsettling, I'll use that word, to know that there isn't a state budget and, and the... and, and the great Kim Adams has to kind of look at the stars and try to figure out the best estimation of what we think is going to happen, be it a governor's budget, or the Senate budget, or the House of Representatives budget, or whatever combination of those three, I don't want people to freak out that just because we don't have a state budget here today on July 24th, that that is going to impact us yet. If there is no school budget by October 1st, that is a different story, because that is when the money stops. And again, we are lucky that we have a $50 million fund balance, we could continue. But I do want people, because people call me all the time, they, they email me, they'll even literally stop me in the street and say, I saw this article, are we going bankrupt? And it's like, no, but thank you for asking, because I love that you like care about this stuff and you want to care about our kids, is that at this point, we're okay. But I do want people to take notice, that if the state does not pass its budget soon, then we're going to have to start to make some decisions as to what can or cannot happen. But that, any sort of decision does not have to be made until kind of October 1st, when and if the state money doesn't come. The likelihood of that is very, very small. What is more likely is the federal money won't come. And if the federal money won't come, we will have to make a decision around, you know, October, November as well. But I'm certainly happy to answer questions from the board on those specifics, but I also am happy, just my promise to the board and to the community, is that every board meeting from now until these things are resolved, I'll give a little bit of an update, because this is new stuff, folks, you know? The, in my lifetime, this hasn't happened in the federal government. I've only been in Michigan for four years and one month, but in my four years as superintendent, the state's always had a budget on time. It was just, it just hasn't happened right now. So I know people are freaked out, I get it, but please let me assure you that at this point, we're really doing fine, and today is going to be just like tomorrow, except tomorrow's a Summer Friday, and we got to take the day off, so that's nice. Okay. With that being said, I'll give it back to Dr. Kavanaugh.
Great, thank you so much. I don't have anything else to add, so I, I welcome any questions from my colleagues.
Mr. Nowitzki?
Yes, one question on the May financial report. I see the transportation line item is quite a bit under budget. Do we just expect another major expense in June, or did we have a significant savings there?
So the transportation budget was underspent as of the end of May. We hadn't received the May invoices yet, they came in June, and then we have June invoices and summer school still. So accruals are still in process, and we should see a better update in the next two months.
Thank you. And then my other questions were follow-up on what the superintendent said. You said we were expecting the federal funding July 1st, so would that have been in the '24, '25 budget, or in the new '25, '26 budget?
So, it's a great question. That money that was to be released three weeks ago was for this now current time. So that money was going to be spent July 2nd, basically. So it is in our budget. Now, I don't want to be pedantic here, but there are two kinds of budgets. There's the July 1st to June 30th budget, and then there's the October 1st to September 30th budget. But no, that money that has not been sent to us is impacting us today. We were expecting the check, and we were certainly expecting to spend it. It hasn't come. So as of today, for the last three and a half weeks, we've been covering those expenses. We are in good enough economic situation that we will continue to cover that up until a time where we feel either the feds are going to give us the money back, or we're going to have to make a decision. And if we do have to make those decisions, it's something that I would certainly be very transparent with the board on. And just as a reminder, we're talking about maybe 1.2 to, 1.2 to $2 million in total, but there's different sections, and what the feds are showing is that they seem to be releasing it bit by bit. So it is possible that Title II might be released, let's say tomorrow, and, but yet we still have to front-load Title III. But I will let you know, so.
Any other questions? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very, very much, because I had people asking about the same topic. I hope the retreat, you can use 30 minutes to go over with numbers. Me, Michigan Healthy or Healthier Program has about 15 millions. We have 97 millions that are coming from grants and others. I think we should have a vision, and I think that I will be happy if we can receive information during the retreat.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Anyone, Trusty Stroh?
Superintendent, I just want to clarify for question. You're stating that we have front-loaded the funding to support us not receiving that payment, but we have not dipped into the fund balance, correct?
Well, no, the, that would be fund balance money. So, but we're, our expectation is that we're going to spend it now, and eventually the feds are going to send us the money. That's what they did with the 21st Century Grant. But if they don't, then yeah, this would be an expenditure of the $50 million of fund balance.
Thank you.
Trusty Williams?
Superintendent, my question is, should they not, and, and you know, I think long-term, should they not send the money versus laying staff off? Have we looked at other potential outlines and outliers so that jobs are secure, our students are getting what they need until funding or whatever needs to happen?
Absolutely, and that's a great question. So because at this point, we feel comfortable kind of just paying it, that, that those decisions haven't been made, but as of July 1st, when that money didn't show up, Kim and her team are, have been sitting line by line saying, what of this grant money do we really need to have and what isn't? Because to your point, if it's student-centered, if it's for the kids, that has to be the last thing we think about cutting. But if it is, you know, an extra, you know, conference, well, you know, maybe that's going to go. And so at this point, we haven't had to make those decisions yet, but we're creating the plan for it. And what's also happening, of course, is because we don't have a state budget, it becomes a little bit more difficult. And why particularly this year it's difficult is that some of the federal money that we use for Sergio's department, we are hearing that one of the budgets that might be approved by the state would increase Section 41. Section 41 is very much what the titles can fund. So if we got extra 41 money, we could just use that to support the Title III money. But we won't know that. So that's why holding on and just paying from fund balance now makes the most sense. But we absolutely are creating plans. I'm happy to go in more depth during the retreat, but what I would probably do is if the next time we have a board meeting, we're still in this situation, I'll try to have some numbers for you in terms of what we can do, so.
Other questions? Well, thank you for your report, Trusty Kavanaugh, and Superintendent, just keep going. Oh, we have to approve it, that's right. Have a motion to approve the finance?
Mr. President, I, I move that the Board of Education approves the finishes of the President for May 2025.
Second.
We moved the second to approve the finance report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Now, item C.
Sounds good. Well, so at, at 8:38, you know, I do want to say some things, but I also, of course, understand that there's lots more to do, and I don't want to belabor the point. So I wanted to talk about three things today. One is the presentation that you saw. My takeaway, of course, is that it is statistically significant that the district as a whole is moving forward. And that's a good thing, and I'm happy. And that is, I think, showing that the district is on a good path. But what we also saw is that there were a lot of places, lots of grades, lots of schools, that there was just not a significantly, statistically significant move forward. And that just says to us that, of course, we have more work to be done. But the good news is that as a district as a whole, and I'm the superintendent of all the children, not just, you know, from one neighborhood or, you know, one, one grade, and so it gives me a lot of, of positive, is that what I think it says to us, and you saw also the data, that from two years ago and from last year, there is this kind of growth, is that we're, at least the things we're doing seem to be moving the needle. So to the point that was made earlier by the board, what I don't want us to do, of course, is to kind of switch horses in midstream, right? Is that I think we, we own what we're doing and we move forward. And if you've been noticing in the press, there's been a lot being made on the state of Michigan, and how the education in the state of Michigan is quite not so good, it's the 44th in the state, in the country, and that they've talked about Mississippi as the Mississippi miracle, that Mississippi, you know, was a state that was 49th in the country, and now is in the top half, and what did they do? And when you read all the articles, or if you talk to the people, and certainly, you know, I've, I've spent time with many educators from Mississippi because they are being lauded as these great things, they'll say over and over again, it's two things, and really two things only. High expectations, hold people accountable. That's it. High expectations, hold people accountable. And so what it, what I'm proud of is that this board, and I want to give credit to this board, is that you are really pushing us to have those high expectations, where we want more and more and more of our kids to be proficient, and then it really is about holding folks accountable to getting there. And of course, what Mississippi has shown is that you have a curriculum, you do it to fidelity, you make sure that the right people are in the classroom, you just make sure that the people that are with the kids are doing right by the kids, and if not, try to support them, or certainly bring others to that. So I think we're on the right path. I really do believe that this coming year, with curriculum and with the structures in place, we're going to see a kind of hockey-stick growth moving forward. And then the good news, of course, is that we haven't seen the M-step scores yet, but if the NWA scores are increasing with a more stringent testing requirement, that says to me, the M-step scores should be good. Now, they are embargoed, so I've seen some of them, but the essay part hasn't been graded and things like that, but we are feeling pretty good. But where we have to really, really be honest with ourselves and hold ourselves accountable is that there is a gender dynamic in math, and that there is a racial dynamic in both subjects. And if we do not say that that has to be one of our main focuses of this year, we're going to do our entire district a disservice. So I want to just highlight again that we, as a district, have to make sure, front and center, that we look at both the gender and racial inequities that are happening in this district. Putting that aside, we talked about the budget. Again, I want the board and the community to feel comfortable that we are in very, very good shape, especially comparatively to other districts. But the longer these budgets go unagreed, or the money that was owed to us isn't sent to us, the more difficult it might be, and just know that certainly I will be transparent about that. And the third one, and you know, I certainly don't want to end on, on something negative, but clearly as a superintendent and somebody who lives in the community and in the district, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that this weekend, there was quite a bit of violence, some of which on children, and some of which by children. And I just want to say to this community, I want to say to our families, I want to say to our children, is that please, you know, whatever we can do to help support you, so that violence is not thought of, that it is not an answer, and that if you are struggling with anything, if you do need support and help, we are here for you. But then also to thank the organizations that have been really active in the community, specifically Advanced Peace, and, you know, and many other nonprofits that have been helping our community, is that the reactions to these things, in the first summer that I lived here in Lansing, there was a lot of conversation around retaliation and, and, you know, large groups of people and things like that, and just knowing that the community has really come out in full force to support the families and to support these actions so that our community can heal and get better, I really want to thank those. But, you know, certainly as a superintendent, as somebody who cares about all children, if they go to our district or not, if they live in the Lansing lines or just outside of it, all of those children are very, very important to me, and I know to this board and to this community, and so I certainly want to just give my respects to everybody and make sure that you know that we are here for you, to support you. And it's also the adults. I know it's odd for a superintendent to say that, but you know, when somebody is shot who's 30 or 40 or 50 years old, I wouldn't be surprised if their child or grandchild was one of our students. And so we want to make sure that all of our, people that live in Lansing are here and supported and healthy. So my thoughts certainly go to you, and to make sure that you know that the district is here to support you in any way. With that, I want to turn it over to the President, Acting, Senor Lopez, and thank you very much for the time.
Gracias, senor superintendente. Well, we'll continue moving on with this, with this agenda. We're now to new business, and we have in front of us board resolution for '25, '26 MSSBO. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I did have a question for the superintendent.
Sure.
About his last point. I've missed a few meetings, and I wanted to follow up on a conversation that we had when I was here last. And I want to ask you this, this way. Since we spoke about this last, have we given you the support that you need or the, the green light to enact some of your really great ideas about ways that we can be a visible resource to families for gun safety and safety in general? If not, tell us, your nine bosses in one, what we can do to help you to take action now.
Absolutely, no. First of all, I do want to thank this board for, I think, empowering me to do quite a lot. My one request will be that during our retreat coming very, very soon, is that we have a conversation about some specifics, because I always want to act with the full faith and support of this board, and I think we've talked about some specifics, but also a lot of generalities in terms of what we can do. And so I look forward to the conversation this coming weekend, so that we can get kind of clarity, and then move very strongly towards it.
Trusty Nowitzki?
Yes, I had another question about finances in the longer term. So we talked about the current funding being withheld, but now that we have a federal bill that is going to impact funding that would go into effect on October 1st, do we know how that's going to impact our budget assumptions, and will we need a different budget amendment than we typically do?
Sure, no, so that's a great question. And I mean, you know, this is where it gets complicated, and I apologize, and I really am trying to channel my inner trusty herd to make sure that what I say is understood. People are brilliant, but I am not, and so the more I can be clear here, the better. The bill that was passed by Congress a couple of weeks ago, as of now, we don't see that greatly impacting us per se. What we don't know is the impact on the Department of Education, and what we don't necessarily know is if any sort of funding streams will change moving forward. So for instance, Title I, which is the largest amount of money we get from the federal government, doesn't seem like it is gone. Now, that can change when the true budget adoption of the, of the government of this country is done later on this year. But the, the bill that was passed, they did a kind of weird procedural thing where it was not necessarily the full budget of everything, of all the funding we would ever get, it was certainly about tax breaks and things like that. But we don't know, especially with now the court case being what looks like finished, that the Department of Education is now going to kind of be eviscerated. We don't know yet. So again, my promise to you and the community is, once we start to know things, we will. But if you remember, I did say to this board, is that we already sort of saw this coming, and we have some budgets, they're light budgets, meaning that they're not detailed, because we're not going to go to individual people until we know for sure, but we do have light budgets with the idea of losing federal money, losing partial federal money, et cetera, et cetera. So right now, we're okay. Tomorrow is another day.
Any other questions? All right, then let's move on to new business. And you have before you a motion to approve the MSSBO bus program? And if there's any questions on that? that? Christina can answer them, for sure. We've seen this before, by the way. So, okay, there being no questions, do I have a motion to approve this purchase?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution for twenty-five, twenty-six MSBO bus program as presented.
Second. Mr. Hurd, thank you very much. Has been moved to second to approve this resolution? Is this, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Please call the robe.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Nevaris Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Noveski?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Strode?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Pass. Thank you. Pass. Thank you very much. Okay, our next bid recommendation is for the purchase of EV buses. And again, we've heard this before, unless you have any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. We talked about this before. I haven't had the opportunity to talk about this again, but I will say that during our National Association for Board Members Conference, I was able to spend a great deal of time for a day looking at their EV bus slate. I did share some photos with our president, superintendent, and vice president about that experience. And I will say, I learned a whole lot about EV buses and the differences. Of course, I asked questions that all the down south people didn't have about the winterization of the buses and the extra mechanisms that we would have to utilize when we have that beautiful fluffy snow outside. So I just wanted to lift for the caliber of this group, that I am definitely in support of this for our school district. And I was able to see, feel, breathe, drive, charge the bus, all in person at the conference. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justice Strode.
Oh, I would love to make a motion. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the bid recommendation to purchase EV buses as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, seconded to approve this purchase. There being no other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, passes. We're going to item D, Square Facilities Management. It's in your packet as well, but can, Christina, can you give us a kind of a put?
This actually isn't me.
Or?
Surprisingly enough, this is not me, even though it says facilities manager, it's a different type of facilities manager. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Jessica Benavides.
Well, good evening, everyone. D Squared is a company Everett High School is in partnership with Duckett Brothers Security and Staffing to contract hall monitor services for their school. This is to ensure safe, structured, and supportive school environment at Everett. And these contracted professionals referred to as the perimeter will be operating under the supervision of the school administrator and in collaboration with our public safety. So the, what's in front of you tonight is to pay for approximately five to six hall monitors for Everett through the, it's cutting out, sorry, guys, through the, through this particular CSA, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Did you say just for Everett?
This is just for Everett.
Can you explain why just for Everett?
Mm-hmm, certainly. So when our schools go through school-based budgeting, this is the only high school that wanted to employ hall monitors. They've actually had great success with those. And so we've had CSAs prior, and so this is the CSA that we're bringing in front of the board for a CSA for hall monitors just for Everett High School.
Okay. Noeweski, please?
Yeah, that was my question. Is this the same company we've been using, or a new relationship?
This is a new relationship.
I mean, I'll go into some detail here, and certainly happy to answer. So just as a reminder, as a school district, we are allowed to have contracts with companies, we're allowed to have contracts with individuals. But what we really aren't supposed to do is have contracts with individuals and treat them like employees. Now, there are some exceptions. It's an emergency. COVID seemed to be an exception for every rule known to humankind. But but we've had hallway monitors at Everett, it's more in a kind of individual manner. And what we're trying to do is to be really thoughtful about how to do this properly and the right way. And so Everett came to us and said, look, we really want to keep them. And we kept saying, well, we got to follow the rules. And they said, well, here's the way to do it. And so I want to certainly thank the Budget Office and the Office of Schools for working with Everett to get them what they needed, but also following correct budgetary rules and regulations.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Okay. I like this concept. I guess I'm a little concerned that it's just going to be for Everett. Is there some way we can possibly look at our budget and cover all the high schools and maybe, what school am I looking at? Gardner. Because again, those are our high-risk areas, maybe that comes from another fund, maybe not right now, but versus doing school-based budget, look at those, the three high schools and Gardner for maybe next year to look at having security in all those buildings?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly happy to do that. I think the issue here is that, let's say Gardner, and I can't speak to it, I'd probably defer to Cordelia or to Jess, but they made a decision as to how they, with, of course, the Office of School Culture, wanted to do their safety and security. So this is Everett's choice to do this. We don't want to bring in an organization or a group of people that is not being asked for by the schools. So again, they might ask for more public safety, they might ask for more deans, they might ask for whatever it is. So this is really about not a money per se, but about the decision of Everett saying they like this. There have been other schools that did not like having hallway monitors. And so they said, look, that's not what we want. We want something else. But I don't know, Jess, if that's...
Yeah, certainly can speak to that. We had the conversations with all of our schools, and exactly like our superintendent said. And I won't name names necessarily in this venue, because I don't want to call any specific, you know, principals on the table for their choices of running their schools. But we've had, we've had high school principals that said, I'm choosing to use my budget in a different way. I'd like an additional public safety officer. I do not find the hallway monitors to be helpful in the way that my building is run. And so all of our high schools have actually had this option, and they had the funding for it, too. So I don't want you to think that there's any fun, there's any school that was limited to not getting hallway monitors. But each of the individual principals, based on their staff, current staffing, and the way that they choose to run their schools, have chosen to not move forward with hallway monitors, except for Everett. If they make different choices in the future, they certainly can do that. I think Kim can talk to the fact that they had more than enough funding to be able to do this at any of our schools. So it is ear to ear. Yes.
Justice Strode?
I love the opportunity for conversation and collaborative efforts to give our principals agencies and their culture and their buildings and their schools, because they are the expert of what the needs are for their location. I do have a question. Do you have any data metrics or anything that supports how the significant changes of certain situations by them having the hall monitors? When they gave you the dialogue as to the why and how we got to this at the table, I think it's great that they had an agency and advocated what their needs are. But I'm just curious if we're voting on it, if you can just give us just a quick little rundown, synopsis of how this instringically improved any setting for their monetization throughout the halls or the behavior management throughout the school?
So any of the budget proposals that you're seeing come through from the school level have all been weighed in through their school improvement planning? So while I don't have the data in front of me based on that, it is based on the school-based decision, which is then based on data. So in the school improvement team, they would need to look at their behavior data. They would get their, kind of, as trustee Hurd has talked about, their staff has has turned in their information around if they find it helpful or not to have. So all of the voice of the staff members is based on that. So I don't have hard data in front of me, but I will say that each of the staff members has said, this is how we choose as a school to allocate our money. And then based on the data that they've collected, either through decreased office referrals, or one of the metrics I know Principal Boils looks at is students getting to class on time, right? That's the number one thing to make sure that we have students in classes. So her attendance rates would show that of getting class, kids into class in a timely fashion. Those would be the couple of the metrics that I know that their schools would look at, but I don't have that information with me this evening.
Yes, I appreciate that, too. And I'm in complete support of supporting what their need is. I was just bringing it to the conversation mainly because I love to make trends and points of, you know, if they're having the hall monitors, you can see that out of our high schools. Their school has been on target and tasked at twenty percent above average with no tardies, or, you know, something along that caliber. So I would love to get that later, not tonight, but I am in support of it and just wanted to bring it for the group.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing I can add that we do have, and I'll look at Cordelia for this, is, you know, it's a little bit complicated to compare what, let's say, Everett would do vis-à-vis Sexton's decision or Eastern's decision. But what I can say is, in 2021, the suspensions, the fights, the, all the things at Everett, and now you compare it to what we had last year, it's night and day. And so that, to me, says, hey, keep on keeping on, right? And so, you know, we we look at that data. And to Sexton's credit, let's say, if Sexton is deciding to not do hall monitors, Sexton also, from 21 to 24, has changed. But that's changed by doing different things. And so, again, but we're happy to bring you hard data, but I certainly can tell you, and I'm looking at Cordelia, I know she's shaking her head, the, those kinds of large-scale fights and things like that has dropped precipitously.
Justice Williams?
I have one more question. So their start date says August 1 to June 30. Why are they starting so soon? Oh, I'm sorry. Their start date says August 1 to June 30. So they're starting at the beginning of, beginning of August and then ending at the end of the month?
When I'm speaking with Principal Boils, they are only going to be contracted for the days their students are in school. So the contract may start on August 1, which just means that we can invoice then for the hall monitors. So they can start to procure the hall monitors, make sure that they've gone through the vetting process, they've hired the hall monitors and so forth. So training, et cetera. But actually, the days that they will be paid for are only the school-facing days that they are there.
Any other questions? I have one. How will, how do they interact with our security folks in the schools?
Very well. We've-
What's the pecking order? I mean, you know?
Yeah. Public safety, of course-
Report to the principal?
They, they report to the principal. They do not report to public safety, but they work very closely with public, public safety. They check in with public safety. They share important information in regards to areas to, to, you know, monitor, pay closer attention to. My observation of the hall monitors is, I mean, you walk through the halls, and I agree with Ben, it's a totally different Everett High School than three, four years ago. The halls are empty, or, you know, for most part. She, Amy's done a really good job with, you know, placing the monitors in specific locations that, so that she can target various areas of Everett High School that she wants to focus on, that may be a little bit more busy or have more traffic than usual. But getting back to the point of public safety and the relationship there, they're, they work just fine together. Of course, our director of public safety, Dale Person, works very closely with Amy. And so between the two of them and the, the two forces, we've seen significant change at Everett High School.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a question, just a quick, very quick comment to Ms. Black's point. Here I am bragging, I'm Everett's board liaison. And I think I've praised them in meetings before about the monitors and going into the school several times over the school year, and seeing the way that they interact with the students more like mentors and less like public safety. It's a different vibration. They, they know the kids, they, and the students respect them. It's a very clean way that they do the transitions. They're in the hallways, they're interacting with students. And really, and from what I saw, sometimes even de-escalating things that would have to be addressed by public safety. It's a, I mean, to be the performing arts school, it's a very quiet place, in the best way. And so kudos to them.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, sixty-five, I say aye. We're voting on the resolution. Okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, all those in favor of the, of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Next time I say, say no. Anyway, any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Our next item is D, Playworks Agreement. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah. So, so for D, Playworks Agreement, I'm really happy with this one, but I don't want to take this first. Jess, do you want to talk about this, or then? Okay.
So Playworks is a national nonprofit that does partnership with schools to bring structured and inclusive safe play to school environments on site via full-time coaches. This proposal is for seven of our schools, Patengill, Lyons, Forest View, Riddle, Avril, Dwight Rich, and North. These seven schools, just to give a little bit of a history, our previous Director of Enrichment and Engagement had, had worked in districts prior with Playworks. In fact, he was a coach at one point. And so he was able to link us with this nonprofit to begin with, Director Draper. And the Playworks people came to all of our K-8 schools and met with them to talk to them about Playworks, to see if it was going to be a good match for them during recess time, lunch recess. Of the schools that they presented to, these seven schools wanted to move forward. Their school improvement teams voted to utilize their school monies. Typically, this is an area for 31A, but it could be general fund or Title I really on any of their budgets, correct?
All general.
All general, okay. Perfect. So again, they're utilizing their school-based budgeting and making decisions through their sit team, because they felt this would be a great addition to their school. What's really neat about Playworks is that it may start out at lunch recess, but the kids get to learn these cooperative games. And so then, and in their own recess time, they become student leaders of these cooperative games throughout the day. And in talking with other districts that have had Playworks in their school districts, they really saw that there was a huge benefit, and they reported overwhelmingly better behavior at recess, fewer conflicts, and greater student safety, and which then in turn increased instructional time, because they weren't having problems after recess for lunch. So we're really excited to see what this can bring to Lansing next year, and if approved by the board, this would start this fall.
Thanks, Jess. What I want to add is that the idea of structured play is one of the most important things that a school district can really take on. Sadly, schools tend to think that, like, well, recess is, hey, kids, go away and like run around. And, you know, when schools start to understand that recess and outdoor time can be structured in thoughtful, fun ways, what you end up seeing, and research is really clear, is the kids not only learn how to do more teamwork building and kind of get along with each other, but that the problems that occur sort of normally in the recess time really don't. And what we, of course, have seen, and again, we could show you the data, the number of kids that get written up during recess, during outdoor play, during whatever, during lunchtime, is much higher than normal time during the day. And this also represents, I think, the, the reason why you do school-based budgeting. You say to a principal, hey, principal, your school, your budget, what do you want to do? The good principal goes, I want to ask my staff. And they go to their school improvement team, and they say, hey, team, what do you want to do? And they go, well, you know what? We have heard of this Playworks thing, let's try it out. So now they agree to it, the principal agrees to it, they know that there's good research behind it. And then we're able to, as a, as a district, have an agreement with this organization as a, as a district, so that we can then work on lowering the dollar figure and having economies of scales and things like that. And so bringing it to the board is this kind of great final structure to say, hey, look, these teachers want it, the school- these teachers want it, the school improvement teams want it, the principals want it, they're willing to pay for it. Hey, board, we'd really love you to allow them to do that." And the reason why something like this comes to the board is because the total dollar figure is over, you know, whatever our threshold is. And so if this had been paid for out of grants, it wouldn't necessarily have come, although I always like to share it. But because the district, the schools think so highly of this that they want to use general, that that's why this is here. So I'm really thrilled because I've heard of Playworks for years, and it's, I mean, Jessica can tell you, one of the things I've been frustrated with over the years is the number of incidents that happen outside, in the playgrounds, during lunch, after, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think this will help solve a lot of those problems, so.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Doc Nowitzki?
Yeah, so throughout the program planner refers to AmeriCorps Coach. Do we know if AmeriCorps is still operating in this venue, or if not, what happens to the program?
That is a great question. It's certainly a conversation we've been having with Playworks. Because this is the contract with them, our expectation is they're going to figure it out. But, you know, we, we understand that there might be some, some changes, but a lot of the work that they do isn't necessarily contingent on AmeriCorps. But the good news is that the lawsuit, and I, I have to tell you, I haven't been paying attention too much. I know that there was some change of some AmeriCorps money just lately that is being released. But again, this is a contract with Playworks. It's up to them to figure it out.
Trustee Heard? Yeah, thank you. It was mine, too. All right. Hearing no other questions, a motion?
Mr. President, yes. I move that the Board of Education approve the Playworks agreement as presented.
It's been moved to second to, to approve this agreement. Have we had discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And now we go to, our last item here is E, Elevate K-12 Master Service Agreement.
Happy to start this one. And Jess, do you want this, or Christina, you want this?
I got it. I know.
Knock yourself out.
But this one's me.
Sounds good. Elevate K-12, one of my favorites. Go to it.
Sure. So I'm not sure if the board remembers or not, but we entered into an agreement with Elevate K-12 for the previous school year as well. So I'm sure the board is aware, we have had different openings, teacher openings throughout the school district. And so Elevate K-12 is a unique partnership that we have that provides virtual learning with certified US-based teachers across the country. So we have a mentor in the classroom when we have an open position helping the students, and then we have a live teacher on the screen in front of the students providing the Michigan standards-based instruction. So we use this in lieu of or while we are searching for a teacher. We leave the posting up for our teachers, and when, as soon as we hire a new teacher, then we will reallocate those funds and use it in a different open position. So for right now, Everett has committed to starting the school year if we do not find a couple of teachers for math, for some math periods that we do need. However, if we find a teacher before we get started, then we will reallocate those funds should another position come open.
What I want to kind of talk about is twofold. One, we are not using this for that many positions. We're talking about very few. But where it really is super helpful is with dealing with something called breakage. So you have a large high school. You have, let's say, let's say you have 26 Algebra I classes. Well, five algebra teachers teach five Algebra I. That's 25. There's one class left. You're not going to hire a full teacher to teach one class. What this allows you to do is have a certified, American-based teacher teaching that one class with another adult in the room who's ours so that you don't necessarily, you know, not have that algebra class. Now, the hope, of course, is that we have zero vacancies and never have to deal with any of this. But we have found, and last year we used it, and it worked pretty well, was fixing these, like, little tweaks within a district of 10,000. We also, and this is our promise to the union and to all of our members, of course, is we're never shutting down a vacancy because of this. So if, let's say we had a teacher opening, let's say we needed a second-grade te... Well, we're not really doing it for little kids, but let's say we needed a math teacher at Everett. We're not saying, "Oh, we have Elevate K-12. We're not looking for a math teacher." We're always looking for that math teacher, and then hopefully, when we fill it, we can then move on to something else. But what we have found is having a certified math teacher, let's say, even if it's digital, is better than a daily sub who might not have the credentials, especially when there's another adult in the room helping the class. I would not think, and I have not ever seen it work very well, when it's just a person on the screen and kids in a classroom. Kids are liable to do all sorts of fun things. But to have a district employee in the room with the children, supporting their learning with that certified teacher on the screen, we've seen it work relatively well. And I don't know, Jess, on a pedagogical level, if you've heard, you know, if you have a story or two, or I know we talk about it, so.
Yeah, so we have also utilized this at Lansing Technical High School because, again, like the breakage that Ben was talking about with some of our smaller classes, of course, and math is one of those, too, right? That it is very difficult to find a math-certified teacher, and especially one that we need for two classes. It's hard to find a part-time person who wants to teach math. So I would say that the feedback that we've gotten is good, the rigor is excellent with these courses. And of course, what I really thought is great is having that one person in the room that almost turns into a co-teaching situation so that that teacher's wandering the room, making sure that they know things. But again, when we have substitute teachers in the room, especially in the area of math, I know that if I had to substitute an Algebra II teacher, the kids would not be for the better because that would, I would have been, that's topping out on my math skills right there. So to have somebody certified who is steeped in this, that can be into the classroom, and the kids are digital natives, I mean, this is not a huge stretch for them to be able to do a hybrid with someone in the room and then the technical. Of course, a live teacher in front of kids is always going to be the best, which is why we're committed to keeping those vacancies open. But no, we found it to be very positive, and there's been less gaps for students in their learning because they're not in front of substitute teachers that are not skilled to teach these subject areas.
Thank you. Any questions? No more questions? Just, just, go ahead, Doctor.
This contract and the previous contract has been reviewed by a lawyer, or we don't need it?
It's been reviewed by Trune.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, Mr. Superintendent, these are certified teachers that meet the state requirements for our kids to get their grades and not have any issues?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a recommendation before us to have a motion.
I'm, oh, okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the Elevate K-12 Master Services Agreement as presented.
It's been moved to second to approve this service agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion passes. Now we're at the point of public comment on agenda items. We have, we don't have any public comment? Hopefully, they're watching on, hopefully, they're watching on TV and will ask questions later. Okay. Comments from the board? And I'll start with, so, right, yeah, Trustee Strode. Short and quick.
It's really quick. I just want to highlight the conversation this evening and the, the data presented in regards to our schools and what we're doing and how we're doing it. And so I just appreciate the presentation today and all the great things that are coming to the district, and I'm excited about the school year.
Ms. Williams? You have no. Kavanaugh?
I would just like to remind everyone who is watching that there is a citywide primary on August 5. And obviously, the decisions we make around the elected officials in our city sometimes have direct implications for the school district. So I would encourage everyone to first make sure you're registered to vote. If you're not, get registered. It's pretty easy to do in Michigan, so that's great. And then research your candidates, and then make sure to vote on, on or before August 5.
Thank you. Mr. Nowitzki? Not? Trustee Heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to congratulate the presenters tonight. Mr. Superintendent, it's just the sort of thing that I'd like to see, at just the sort of caliber I'd like to see it. You are to be congratulated, as is your team. Thank you. Also, Mr. President and Mr. Superintendent, board colleagues, I wanted to take a moment to honor one of our Lansing School District alumni who has passed away tragically after his battle with cancer. Kenneth Robertson, Jr., JW Sexton High School, class of 2001, passed away this past Saturday after battling a very rare cancer for the past few months. This has been a significant loss to the greater Lansing music community and to the national art scene. As Kenny, as we call him, was one of the finest multi-genre drummers the city has ever known. Kenny has been heard in venues across the United States and Europe with his most recent appearance with the Lansing Symphony Orchestra during the Holiday Pops. He will be greatly missed. He is a testament to the excellence of our district and the beautiful spirit of our community. Colleagues, please join me in standing with his family, his wife, his only daughter, and his extended family, Sexton alums all over. Please send kind thoughts to his families. Also, if you've been considering sending your baby to the Lansing School District so you can be a shining star like Kenny, and you want them to realize their greatest potential with the finest faculty, staff, administrators, and also student achievers, it's about time you came home, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Heard. Dr. Rodriguez? Yes, ma'am?
I think, I think it was a great, great meeting again for everybody. I want to know how we are going to go to Eversole Saturday, Friday, or I'm going to...
We have a stagecoach.
I'm going to send direction to all of us.
It's, it's a buzz. What time?
4:30.
Yeah, we, we'll resend that information. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just a quick reminder from my report that August 5 is the primary, but also the grand opening of Mount Hope, and the community hopefully will come out to see our great new facilities.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the board for great discussion. It's a little longer than usual, but I think it's well worth it. And so now we're going to go into closed session. So I would like a recommend, a motion, please.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education recess into closed session for the purpose of considering material exempt from disclosure, as is permitted in the Open Meetings Act. Section 8, 1(c) for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing.
It's been moved to second to go into closed sessions. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, do we? Do we, we rock? We do? I'm sorry. Rock or vote, please.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Nabars Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Nowitzki?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Mrs. Strode?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Passes. Okay, we'll adjourn. Not adjourn. We'll go into closed session. Oh, we are? Not yet. Oh, we're good? All right, we didn't see our, our mugs out there. All right, we're back from closed session. And we have one action item to take care of before we adjourn this meeting. So may I have a motion?
President?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Board of Education accept the tentative agreement between the Lansing School District and the Lansing Association of School Administrators, LASA, as presented.
Second. It's been moved to seconded. Any other questions? Okay, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Nabars Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Nowitzki?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Mrs. Strode?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Motion passes. There being no other business, we're adjourned. 9:41.